It looks like we have everyone then. Should we get going? Great, then I would like to call the Concord School Committee meeting to order. I will note that we are being broadcast via Zoom and MMN and recorded, and this will be posted later. So if we can get started, first of all, welcome everyone. I know we have a big crew on with us, Principals and Kristen, and we are so thankful that you are all here with us. Trying to see if I can see everybody. And Ruth, Jared, of course, thank you guys for joining us. I'm just sorry for switching my screens to get to my agenda. If we can start with, actually, we didn't, we don't, I was going to mention that we don't have correspondence on here, but I just want to mention one correspondence because we did get one email just with feedback on the remote learning plan. So we will take that feedback into account with all of the feedback that we're getting through the survey, which I am sure is very helpful. So we're going to go straight to the budgets. So Jared, do you want to kick us off with some budget updates for Concord?
I would, I'd love to. So I'm going to give a much bigger picture for the region because the region really is when the 112 budget comes into play more. So there's really no updates for FY '20 or '21. More updates since I last gave them. We are in closeout mode, as I told you. We should have some numbers fairly soon that I'm comfortable with that should stick on what I intend to have for closing numbers. We did have a meeting yesterday. It was a regional meeting that they talked about the 112 budget. But we also had a meeting with some of the town administrators on what their plans are for budget. Right now, we still have anticipated June 22nd town meeting. Hopefully, we can still have that, and we don't have to worry about going into a 112 budget for next year. We're still waiting on the ways and means. And until we hear from them, we're assuming we're just making assumptions. Chapter 70, chapter 71, circuit breaker, et cetera. So really, until they come out with their numbers, there's really nothing new to report.
Okay. All right, thanks for the update on that. Then we'll do a quick update on the middle school project.
I have a quick question.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry, questions.
So Jared, has there been any additional unanticipated spending due to remote learning?
There has been some softwares that we've purchased, but a lot of them are really not going into effect until FY '21. If we, and Kristen can probably even speak on those a little bit for curriculum. But there really hasn't been too much unplanned spending. So.
Okay.
And also, I forgot to mention as well preschool, so preschool reimbursements, we're going to be getting on the next warrant. So those will be out to people. There aren't too many, not too many people paid for the full year. So I did want to state that as well. We really have no other fees at CPS that need to be reimbursed.
There were no athletic fees at the middle school?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jared, is there any discussion about the range or potential, let's call it severity, of changes coming out of ways and means? I always, I always think it's wise in planning in uncertain times to know what the range of possibilities is because it gives us more time for some readiness. Anything, any discussion there? Or is everybody simply sitting tight with no discussion, no predictions?
Right, a lot of, I mean, we're all making assumptions, not necessarily predictions yet. What I did do is I did go back and look at what happened in, you know, the 2010 crisis, tried to compare it in real dollars if that happened to us this year. The thing is, is chapter 70, I'm not worried about chapter 70. I think that's going to really stick. I also think that we, because we vote our budget so much sooner than the governor's budget comes out, I'm very conservative with my numbers. So I don't anticipate really any drops lower than the FY '20 circuit breaker amount. And I didn't, I didn't project much higher than that. I think chapter 71, which is regional transportation, is going to be reduced. That does not impact the K through 8. What may impact the K through 8 is circuit breaker. But what they're going to do first for circuit breaker is they're going to reduce the regional, they're going to, they're going to reduce the transportation piece first, which when they were rolling out about 25%, I did not budget for that. So that, that could be, you know, $25,000, $50,000 right off the bat that won't hurt us because I was not anticipating that. So a lot of my projections really are for the region. And the Concord budget is pretty much just, it's mostly made up of property taxes. And what's really, you know, they're going to be getting most of those. Local receipts will be down for Concord. But I don't anticipate too much. I mean, I expect reductions from the state, but not something so catastrophic at this time.
All right, good, that's helpful, thank you.
Other questions, anything else? Okay, and I will just, I'll just mention on the tail of that, too, that since the Concord Finance Committee has not been meeting, we don't have any further feedback from them or anything. So we continue to await any guidance that they will give later.
Heather, the only thing I'll interject is that they're planning, as of today, to have the public hearing on Monday.
Okay.
So that could change, but.
Oh, next week on Monday, yes, yes, okay, got it. Yep, okay, good, thanks for mentioning that, perfect. Okay, then, if nothing else, I will move on to middle school. Just do a quick update here. The Middle School Building Committee met this past Thursday and basically started to go through the reconciliation of the estimates that we've gotten for our various design concepts. Once again, I'll state upfront at the beginning here, the committee is meeting to basically keep the designers, the design team, moving on things that they have to be moving on. We are not making major decisions that need community input or anything like that. We're kind of keeping them moving along. So what they brought us were the initial cost estimates from the estimators for the four different design concepts that the designers have created, plus what we're calling the options, the optional, I don't even want to call them add-ons. Basically, the way we're pricing it is as a, what we're calling the base building, plus the other things that will get added on to that, the sustainability improvements, whatever gym or auditorium we choose. And just to clarify that, it's not to say that we are planning for just the base building necessarily. It's that we need to understand the cost implications of each different thing and how we piece them together. So that's all coming in. I wouldn't say those cost estimates are final yet because based on some feedback from some committee members, they're continuing to work on them, going back with the designers, doing some value engineering already, and just trying to understand the numbers a little bit more. The numbers came in a little bit higher than we expected, and so trying to get a little more insight into that. So that's what's going on. We thought we'd meet again this coming Thursday morning at 7:30, basically to just follow up on those numbers and make sure we have, all have a good grasp on them. And again, like I've said before, at some point soon, we will get to a point where community input is needed, and we are not going to rush forward without that. We have not yet discussed what we're going to do or how we're going to operate at that point. Lori or Court, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I think you got it. A couple of things to add, and that is that the, the original budget prediction was in the range of $80 to $100 million, number one. Number two, the amount over based on initial estimates is not small. So there's a lot of hard work to be done. We don't want to underestimate that. I don't think the community should presume that the timetable of several months ago to have a special town meeting in the fall is necessarily so. Because I think the chairs of the Building Committee will see that that undergoes some debate. So we want people to know, just as you prefaced, this work is happening because we're under contract with these design firms. It doesn't mean that a timetable overall is necessarily what we would have hoped. It may or may not be, so that's, that's open. And we're in the process of taking a look at how the square foot dimensions of the building were reduced in order to reduce costs and protect the core educational function of the building. And now it requires a close look at how does this reduced size serve core education? And to your point, then, what do we do about sustainability investments, which are important to the town? What do we do about performing arts space? What do we do about gymnasium options? And these are going to be exceedingly difficult conversations and decisions. So nobody should underestimate that either.
Exactly. Oh, and I should mention there was also a sustainability subcommittee meeting, which I've lost track of days, Lori.
Tomorrow at noon.
There is, okay, and there was one last week, and again tomorrow at noon.
Yes.
So let's see, anything else you want to add, Lori?
Not a lot, just that really the benchmark, I think the chairs are targeting right now is getting to where schematic, or I'm sorry, feasibility is closing out a bit as a natural place to step back and look at the context we're now operating in and the place we are. And I think that's some of the mindset that they have. And we're, that's what we're talking, that's all of the stuff you just mentioned is, is part of that process. So I agree with Court. We're on the precipice of a discussion of where we are and the timing of what we do next. And certainly some community input, whether that means we do some level of outreach now, which I don't think, I think we should do maybe as a forum or something. And then how we go forward to really allow for adequate community input before any final decisions are made. So those are all the discussions that are happening and will happen very much on Thursday, when we meet Thursday morning.
Yep, exactly. And we don't, we have Justin on today, too. Justin, anything you want to add? Probably muted.
Unmuted myself just to say no.
Okay, all right. Well, thanks for all your input.
I think that's called irony or paradox.
You're right, exactly. Okay, that's good then. Do we have, anything else from a Concord standpoint that anybody wants to touch on, Concord members? Great, then do we have our two Carlisle members on now? David and Eva, do we have you with us? I'm scrolling. I don't see them yet. You sure you don't have anything else, Concord, you want to talk about, guys?
Yeah, let's, while we're texting them, can we confirm that the buildings are buttoned up? And we're doing what we can with the public safety to see that they're not overused in this time. We know we've put barriers across, and we're trying to protect them and protect citizens who might be out there playing basketball.
So we, we did close everything up and have, as you said, you know, restricted access through the driveways. The police are trying to check in on what's happening on the grounds and enforce those restrictions. We have custodians at every building doing building checks on the weekdays, Jared, right? Except for at the middle school, where we always go in on the weekends just because stuff happens at the middle schools over the weekends. So there is some ongoing physical presence on the campuses, which we thought was very important. So we're not seeing too much traffic there lately, which is good. We're just trying to continue to send those messages. In terms of access to the building itself, that's all happening in a very tight, organized way that aside from those daily building checks, there's really no entry without a plan being made up through the Principals and the Central Office. So very minimal things going on. And when things do happen, we're responding and working with the police really collaboratively.
And the police blotter may indicate that we had some lawn damage at the Willard. So I'd, I'd ask any listener to know that our police department, our 911, is very responsive to protecting public facilities. So if you don't like what you see, make a call and let them determine how to handle it.
Yes, and just I'll back that up by saying when it happened about a year ago at Sanborn, we actually did find out who did it. And there were consequences. So it's worth saying that we're not going to take those sort of things without, without serious action, so.
We love our schools.
Yeah, and I, we think the, we know the community does, too. So we just ask for respect to the properties while they're vacant.
Thank you.
So David has joined us. Why don't we wait till 9:20 for Eva to join, and then she has and she can join us in progress.
Great. Well, I'll just say, the other day, it was, to the Principals, it was really fun to see a bunch of your students on that talent show. From the kindergartners on up, it was, we have some talented kids out there in those schools right now in their homes.
Absolutely.
Here we go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Eva, and hi, David.
So I'd like to bring the Concord-Kyle Regional School Committee meeting to order. Please note we're being recorded.
Great, so first we have chair and liaison reports. I know there aren't many liaison reports much these days. From the chair, we want to look at the schedule for meetings. Lori had sent out a tentative schedule, basically, that has us meeting every two weeks for the next couple of months. So that's all, let's see, whoops, I don't have it in front of me. But that would be.
I'm happy to review it.
Today, then May 12th, May 26th, June 9th, and June 23rd. For right now, we've put all of those in as joint meetings. And of course, we can peel them back if there's nothing joint, and we need to do just Concord.
Heather, can I just clarify, because this is what we have to talk on? The original schedule was May 12th and 19th. I was suggesting that we spread that out to the 26th. And then in June, the original schedule was June 9th and 16th. So I guess that's part of today's conversation is whether you want to, I think we did that to align it with the close of school, which still, stills aligned, but there's so much else going on. I think that's part of the discussion. Do you want that at June 9th and 16th? Or do you want to go the 9th and the 23rd? Although the 20, well, doesn't, the 22nd and 23rd are right now the tentative town meeting dates. So I think that's part of what we're trying to decide.
I think we probably should change that late June meeting to the 22nd to coincide with opening of town meeting. Even though we may not open until the 20, we may not be present until the 23rd, but just to hold the place.
That's true. We usually, we at least convene for town meeting.
And I think the town moderators are still coordinating because right now Concord's the 22nd and Carlisle's the 23rd. So I don't know that that's all been resolved as to where we would be when. Obviously, we can't be, well, maybe we actually can be at both places at once if it's. But anyway, that's not the plan, so.
Well, and I guess that the question then comes to, we often convene for town meeting, but don't usually have a full meeting with everything that needs to get done right before town meeting. That said, all of our, you know, all of our agendas are, basically, on this year. If our, if the 22nd or 23rd is a pre-town meeting meeting, then would we need another one on the 16th? Or do you think we can cover it in that, in the meeting before town meeting?
Hard to tell at this point. Well, it's going to change between now and then.
Exactly.
I think we should assume that the meeting on the 22nd is for the purpose to, of taking quick action if necessary, not to plan for what we might do, but to respond quickly. That's why we're in session, so that we can have a vote if we're, if it's required. But I don't think it should be required if we've done our preparation prior.
So maybe we have our meeting on, move it back to the 16th again.
Yeah. I think that should be in there.
And then we just plan to convene for town meeting, but it's not an actual, it's not a school committee meeting with a regular agenda.
Yeah, like we do it usually at the beginning of a town meeting night, we'll convene prior to, but we do have to open a meeting to sit at town meeting.
Right. Okay, so that puts the 16th back on the calendar, Lori, does that work?
Works for me.
Okay. All right, we'll do that. So, so that means our school committee dates are now, if I go through them again, May 12th, May 26th, June 9th, and June 16th. Now, we've also, we've been meeting in this time, instead of doing evenings 9:00 a.m., I would propose that we just stick with this 9:00 a.m. time instead of the evenings, of course, other than the town meeting night. Does that work for everyone?
I think, again, that's going to be subject to where we are. If we're back to having face-to-face meetings.
Then that would change, yes.
We don't want to do that and move it to the evening.
Yeah.
Well, that's subject to change.
Yeah, I guess we should say everything that we say right now is subject to change. But for now, this is what we can put in the calendar.
That works.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Then if there's nothing else, does anybody, I don't, does anybody have any liaison reports? Don't think so, okay. If there's nothing else on that, we will hand it over to Lori and the full team now for remote learning overview.
Thanks, and actually, all I'm going to do is introduce Kristen. She's going to take the lead to give you a big overview with detail on where we are and where we've been and some of what we're talking about, where we're going. All the Principals are here, and Ruth is here. So they're welcome to chime in at any point or answer your questions. We just thought it was valuable to have you have access to everybody and have them be able to participate, given that they're such a huge part of how this is all, all going and how it's going to move and all of that. So I think, Kristen, that, we'll turn it over to you to kick us open?
Kicking open. So today's going to be a little unusual for those who are used to hearing me speak about our curriculum because usually I talk in threes, and today I'm going to talk in fours. So we are having four phases that we're planning for. We had Phase 1 of our remote learning started Monday, March 16th, and went until Phase 2 started Monday, April 20th. Now we are planning for Phase 3, which we hope to start on Monday, this coming Monday. And then we are also planning for Phase 4, which is summer school and the fall. And I'm, I'll talk about each of those in turn. So Phase 1 started on Monday, March 16th. We were unique from our surrounding communities because we started literally after one day of remote learning. So we got out very fast. People were, parents were very, very appreciative of teachers and administrators' efforts. And we knew from the very beginning that our most important priority was the social emotional state of our students. With a global pandemic, there is increased anxiety. So any student, or frankly, adult who has anxiety, it's going to be exacerbated because of what's going on, the not knowing, and so forth. So what we do in those times is use familiar structures to hold, to hold students and to keep them safe emotionally. So, and we really learned this from going to our colleagues in other districts where this had already happened. We learned a lot, for example, from Wuhan, China, from the educators in Wuhan. We know, we listened to podcasts. We had a team that was really looking at, okay, in two days' time, we came up with what this was going to look like. And we really relied on our predecessors, who had gone immediately before us in China and Italy and so forth, but also on other examples of remote learning that have happened through time. So that social emotional piece came out clearly. As part of that, we wanted daily, daily, two-way communication between teachers and students. That happened sometimes through email, through Zoom or Google Hangout. One first-grade teacher was very creative. She literally, the first day we were out, started 6:30 bedtime stories, 6:30 p.m. bedtime stories, just so her kids could see her every day, her students could see her every day. And I just, I tuned in. I loved hearing them, they were wonderful. And so daily messages were sent from all teachers to their students. And for the little, our littlest students, the emails were sent to their parents. And what we were doing in terms of learning activities was enrichment and extension. So we were not doing new material, but we were offering enrichment and extension in every single subject area. So English Language Arts, Math, Social Studies, Science, all the languages, the arts, PE, health, and so forth. So every class that every, any kid took, they were getting something there. And I remember meeting the day before we went out with the middle school staff, for example, and they were kind of excited about this. The eighth-grade social studies teachers, I remember saying, well, we're doing the Constitution right now. We love the Constitution. We never get enough time with the Constitution, so we want to go deeper. I remember a sixth-grade math teacher saying, these kids are going to know a lot about fractions. So, so we were excited about that. It gave teachers a chance to explore some areas more deeply or bring in like ornithology or some other areas that they had never explored with students. So based on our research with the other districts in other countries that had gone before us, we knew we couldn't have the same expectations in terms of time on task for students. So we got to 20 minutes of work per subject per day, which would equal for students about a half a day of school. And with the increased anxiety and so forth, switching over modes, we thought that was a pretty good gauge. And I just have to say, during this time, we really relied on the professionalism of our teachers. And they were so creative, the things that they came up with, art galleries of students' work at the elementary level, Kahoot games for review at the high school level. These, all the enrichment opportunities were optional, but I took a poll of the teachers, asking how much involvement we had. We had about 75% of our students who were showing up in some way, shape, or form. And so that left for us an uncharacteristic 25% of kids who weren't involved. And so what we did was teachers themselves reached out, guidance counselors, administrators, to see what was the blockage. So this period, the first month, was really making sure that everybody had the devices they need, the computers they needed to get online. We did a distribution for the elementary families who didn't have laptops for the kids to use, making sure they had internet connectivity, making sure they had the support they needed, emotional support, if that's what they needed, and so on. So that support was provided. And all of that was groundwork for Phase 2, which is the current phase that we're in. So in Phase 1, I have to say, teachers, it was like the sprint part of this. Everyone's endorphins were up, we were making it happen. And I think the public and parents in particular recognized that and were extremely appreciative. At every turn, we saw. At every turn, we saw um, appreciation being expressed and frankly, that fueled us. It was really, really um, well-regarded among the teaching staff. So we are in, currently in phase two, that started on Monday, April sixth. Um, and so, social emotional state of our students and what's happening with them, keeping them connected to the school environment, still our top priority as it will be in all the phases. So the difference with phase two is that it is now mandatory that kids are participate and we have been allowed to introduce new content. So the Department of Education came out with a, Massachusetts Department of Education came out with a guidance document that said, yes, now you can introduce new content. Um, so we now estimate we have about ninety-seven percent of our students participating, which is back to our normal. So that's feeling really good. Um, we are reaching out and supporting the families who aren't uh, participating at this moment and sometimes they have unique stories. You know, a couple of students who are essential workers because they work at uh, Crosby's, the grocery store or a pharmacy or um, something like that, some because they are sick. So we, we're feeling really good about our participation. Um, and we have individual plans for kids who, who don't have that. During this time, we also came up with uh, the grading system. So uh, we are holding kids accountable um, using a credit no entry system, meaning kids are, are still getting um, noticed for their participation in what they're doing, um, but they are held harmless if they're not able to uh, participate. So that is uh, being recorded um, and we'll maintain that system of credit no entry for the rest of the year. So the big difference in phase two was that we can introduce new content. And if you look at the time and the, and you consider the situation of kids working from home, some have parents that can support them, some don't. Um, with the best guess that we could do, uh, given the Massachusetts Department of Education guidance and so forth, we thought we could cover about twenty-five percent of what we usually explore in the spring of the content. So a big, huge shout out right here to curriculum specialists at the preschool and elementary level and the department chairs at the uh, middle school and high school levels, all administrators and teachers working in teams. I think I was on Zoom meetings sixteen hours a day sometimes. Um, working to determine if we can only teach twenty-five percent of what we had, how do we determine what the twenty-five percent is? And, and frankly, at this point, we had no guidance on what that was. Um, so uh, teams went through their curriculum and decided what was the most important pieces, skills that we wanted students to practice and new content that we wanted to introduce. So um, that was all memorialized in documents that are in our big curriculum mapping software called Atlas Rubicon. It's available on the teaching and learning part of our, our, the district webpage. Um, so we captured everything that we're going to do. Um, and we continue to capture, make notes as we go along, so on all the new content. Um, and we've made some really good decisions, I think. Those documents are helping us plan for phase four, which is the fall. So, so we know exactly what we're, what we're working on. Um, and I, I would talk a little bit more about that. And in some ways, if this was comforting to the educators, because now, finally, they're not coming up with new different activities, they're taking what they had in terms of their um, existing units and transferring them into remote learning activities. Um, and so, you know, sometimes that was easy and sometimes it was really hard. Um, and preschool to grade five teachers are still mostly sending them out via email to parents. Um, and so, for example, a third grade parent um, would have an email from the classroom teacher with all the subjects listed. Um, the math, English, um, social studies, science, um, and health would all, and social emotional would all be right from that classroom teacher. Um, and then the um, specialist subjects, library, art, music, PE uh, and Spanish would all be from uh, and a message from that teacher within the school, the specialist teacher. Uh, and this was all supported by, and it continues to be supported by the special educators that normally support the students. Um, so, and then in grades six through twelve, luckily, we have Google Classroom. So that's an organizing, um, it's basically like an online virtual backpack. And so a kid opens their um, Google uh, classroom and they have a folder for each subject that they take and they go into that folder and they find out the activities for um, what they need to do for each subject. So there we can put links in, videos, screen casts that the teachers were making, are currently are making. Um, and we can do links to online adaptive software, which I'll talk about in a little bit more uh, in a minute. Um, and so that's a really good organizing principle for all of our kids. Um, and um, mostly, I would say that the quality and the type of teaching that I'm seeing um, throughout is, I would call it a flipped classroom. So usually, new content is introduced through ske- screencasting. So a teacher's talking about whatever it is, they're showing a video, they're um, reading a book. Um, kids are having to read an article. Um, and then they show up in some way, either through email or uh, live and synchronous sessions for office hours. So this is especially true at the middle school and high school. So there's periods when kids have done this learning remotely and then they come into a session with their teacher and they're able to ask questions. That's the flipped part of it. So usually in uh, when we have regular school, you would go to school, you'd have a lesson, some activities, you'd go home, do the questions um, at that time. So now we're flipping that, the kids are doing the learning uh, of the new content mostly on their own and then, and then they're being able to ask questions. So with all of this happening right now during phase two, what was really happening in the background was planning for phase three. So you can imagine, this is all, this is why there were hours and hours of Zoom meetings. I'm, you know, I feel like I'm a member of the Brady Bunch cast because I'm so sick of looking at myself on the screen. Um, so.
Brady would you be, Kristen?
I think I'd be Alice.
No, I think Marsha, I'm going to go with Marsha.
Marsha, Marsha, Marsha. So anyway, phase three, um, we're hoping to start with, on May fourth. And um, anytime we have a change in working conditions, we work. Lori has had great leadership in working with our uh, union presidents and they then turn and work with union membership to negotiate how we're going to do this. And I, I just have to say, thirty-three years uh, in public education and this is an unprecedented partnership that is happening right now. It is so productive uh, and constructive. Um, we just, we come to the table, the virtual table, and we just put an idea out there, we poke holes in it, okay, where, where do what we, how do we make it better, streamline it? Um, and then put it out there, it's all happening so fast, um, but with incredible collegiality. So in phase three, we're hoping for four things, if you've saw Lori's message. We're hoping for um, and planning for increased live opportunities with teachers, increased accountability, increased structure and additional approaches to student engagement. So let me just talk about each of those uh, for phase three. This is what people can expect to see somewhat, you're seeing it already. Um, but uh, starting next week and moving forward. So the live opportunities, we uh, got a lot of good feedback uh, through the parent survey. Uh, that's uh, I think still open or is it?
Closed, it closed yesterday.
Closed yesterday, okay. So I think we had fifteen hundred responses, something like.
Eight hundred when I closed it.
Oh, eighteen hundred, so, so we really know what you think, we got it. So um, and probably the biggest uh, piece that uh, parents were asking for was more increased live opportunities and so that's what we're working on. And a big shout out to um, the Concord Education Fund who uh, were, gave us the money to be able to uh, fund Zoom uh, the private licenses and um, and sort of answer that question about the student confidentiality that we needed to do. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, so what we can, what we're hoping and planning for is that each student will have two live learning sessions with their teachers each week, either using Zoom or Google Hangout. For preschool and uh, elementary students, these meetings are going to look a lot like what we already do, what we call open circle. So this is a social emotional curriculum where you're checking in with each kid um, and seeing how they're doing, giving them some skills in social emotional. Um, and then previewing the learning, previewing the academic learning. Uh, at the middle school and high school, it looks different. The two live sessions a week will look, be academic lessons, um, and then office hours times for kids to ask questions. So that's the increased live opportunity and that's probably the biggest change. We're also going to have increased accountability. So at all of these live sessions, attendance will be taken. So a participation will be noted in our uh, student organizing piece of software called Aspen. And that's really important because what we're teaching now are what the Department of Education calls prerequisite content for moving on to the next grade level. So this is necessary, this is important. We've identified, they also call them power standards, all the content that we've identified now, we need kids to do. So no kids are going to be held back moving from fourth grade to fifth grade. Um, and they are going to have the skills um, in fourth grade to move on to fifth grade. Um, but I'll foreshadow that we're doing the planning for phase four and what the beginning of the school year looks like as well. So we're also having increased uh, structure for kids' days. So um, we have to coordinate when all these live sessions are going to be at the school-based level um, so that teachers aren't trying to um, Zoom with kids at the same time. So uh, the middle school and the high school have worked out really good systems um, and our elementary schools will be doing that as well. Um, and so more to come on that. The other big increased structure piece that we're going to have is we're trying to roll out um, a learning platform for the elementary kits, like we have Google Classroom for the um, middle school and the high school. It has been incredibly helpful to have all the links and the messages all in one place at the middle school and the high school. So we're trying to do it for the elementary school. So Google Classroom is a great tool, but it's pretty mature, so um, it's for more mature users, so we're hoping to use that in grades three, four and five. And then at uh, especially at one of our elementary schools, Willardon Elementary School, they are using um, Seesaw, which is a uh, similar learning platform for uh, the, the younger kids, kindergarten, first and second grade. So um, Weston uses this, they, they like it. Um, so we feel pretty good about uh, adopting it and teachers are saying that um, that it's going to work out well. And we also have an actual Seesaw ambassador trainer in our district, so we're looking forward to um, relying on her for some training. So the last piece of um, phase three that you would see is um, additional approaches to student engagement. And so I'm calling these milestone events. So what we're trying to do is give kids milestone events over the next six weeks that, that would have occurred if we were in school. So milestone events in curriculum. Um, for example, we, everybody knows about the fourth grade, Blanding's Turtles. Um, and so the big event for the fourth graders is to release the turtles back into the wild after they've studied them and helped them grow to some maturity. Um, and so we are having a virtual Blanding's Turtles release. Um, the folks from Grassroots Wildlife are gonna um, Zoom with the kids. Um, they're going to be the presenters and the kids are going to watch and as the naturalists uh, release these turtles back into the wild, how you would do that. Um, and uh, we also want milestone events in, in schools. So there are, for example, at the Row Elementary School, they had a character book, um, book character parade um, that engaged all the kids in the school. Um, assemblies have happened at uh, each of the levels and will continue to happen at each of the levels. And then finally, everyone has talked a lot about this, but the milestone events for the last year in each schooling. So we're looking, uh, the principals are working very hard with the uh, PTGs um, on events for our fifth graders, our eighth graders, and then of course, our twelfth graders. So um, of course, we can't exactly um, replicate an in-person graduation and so forth, but maybe we can find some, some way to recognize them that would be really special and unique and they will always be the class of twenty twenty. So in terms of a philosophy for phase three, and this is our same philosophy that we're building uh, toward for phase four in the fall, the name that I'm using right now for it is inquiry-based blended learning. And there are four pillars to this vision. I've talked about each of them, but uh, I, I want to lay them out uh, more directly. So first, our goal, s- starting now and definitely for the fall is to have a common electronic learning platform for all students. So they or their parents can access the tools that they need to learn, communicate with educators, receive feedback from educators. So you're doing a writing piece and your teacher writes back and forth with you on your uh, piece of writing. Uh, and then it's also a place to collect their work and reflect on their work as students. And so that can happen over the course of their, their lives uh, with us in Concord Public Schools and Concord Carlisle High School. So the second piece of uh, the inquiry-based blended learning is adaptive learning tools. So these are um, online tools um, which mirror the techniques that we use already in the class. Meaning the, the gist of a classroom is an, a skilled educator understanding where each kid is individually and where they need to go. So understanding that continuum of learning, um, let's say in reading skills and then placing them, okay, this kid can do um, sounding out words. Now they need to do, understand the rhythm of how you read, the fluency with which you read and so forth. So we're figuring out each individual kid where they are and then moving them along that continuum in a differentiated way. So luckily, with the advent of the twentieth century, um, and into the twenty-first century, we have tools, technological tools that can do some of this work with us. These are really in skill-building areas like math, reading, writing and learning a foreign language. So um, what we're doing right now is, uh, and Cynthia, I think you asked a question about um, costs. So a lot of the companies, for example, we use Lexia for reading. Um, for math, we use uh, Dreambox at the elementary, IXL at the middle school, Delta Math at the high school. Um, a lot of these uh, are being offered right now during the pandemic, this spring um, for very low or no cost. But it does mean signing up and getting them working in our district and downloading every kid's name and so forth. So there's, for each piece of software that we're using, I think right now, we're probably using twenty-five new pieces of software um, or extended, so it's a lot. Uh, it probably takes two or three weeks to get it fully functional um, for our district. So why are the companies offering all this software for free? Uh, it's, I, the hope that we would continue to use it and buy it in the future. So as we've selected these pieces of software um, from, there's millions out there. Um, we, we've really looked at what works well with Google Classroom, what is along the lines of our philosophy. Um, and are teachers able to identify where um, kids are and then give them the next steps along the way? Are they adaptive pieces of software? Uh, so, so we're able to do that. All of those pieces of uh, software are coming onto line now and um, and then everything that we're doing now will be in place for the fall, uh, also for summer school. So um, then the third part of the inquiry-based learning is the inquiry approach. So this is probably the most interesting part of education. Um, it's not about learning new skills, it's really about exploring new content. So what do students know about whatever subject it is? Let's say, I use the example of the American Constitution. What do they want to know? What have they already learned? Um, and what are the tools and techniques that you use to figure that out? So we're trying, we're talking about lifelong learning here and we use a four-step process. It's called the WISE model, so. So first, you wonder. You think, okay, what is this thing? Then you investigate, and that's where all these research tools and techniques come into play. So we have robust library systems. We're just buying Overdrive, which is a virtual checkout system for our elementary schools. We already have it at middle school and high school so that kids can investigate. We have Brain Pop, which is a great piece of software where kids ask questions, and then there are short videos that explain it with some practice exercises after to make sure they have comprehension. So that's the inquiry piece of what we're doing. And then lastly, as I said in the beginning, all of this is in a foundation of building and sustaining communities and cultures in our classrooms and schools where each member feels safe and supported. And that will continue. That socioemotional part is pivotal all the time in schools, particularly now when we are in such an anxiety-provoking time. So what can you expect to see in Phase Four, which is the last part of what I'm talking about? You would expect to see what you're going to see in Phase Three with the blended inquiry-based learning, with the common learning platform, the adaptive tools, the inquiry approach, and the socioemotional taking care of. And then in the fall, we're hoping for much more accountability with grades and alignment to our strategic plan objectives. And so I just, I feel very confident about where we're going and that we're figuring it out very well as we go along. And just a lot, a few last notes. As I said earlier, I've been in public education for over 30 years and worked on four, five public school teams as a teacher, as a principal, as a curriculum leader, and so forth. And without a doubt, this group that I'm working with right now, the principals, the teachers, the leadership, we couldn't be doing what we're doing without this group. They are the best. All of them have shifted the balance of their own lives. All these Zoom meetings I'm at with 100 people, you have teachers with little kids on their laps. They're trying to teach a math problem. They're trying to get dinner on the table. And shifted the balance of their own lives to figure out what's best for students. And I'll just give you a sense of what I'm talking about. I was thinking about this. Normal educational change, and I'll use Concord as an example. Many of you have lived through this. I've been here about eight years. And we made a change at the middle school and the high school level to one-to-one with computers. That took about two to three years, years, just for that one transition. And then another two or three years with working with Google Classroom, just to get that in place. For a typical curriculum committee, let's say, social studies, we make changes by having a committee, and then we meet all year for one year, and then we implement for another whole year, the changes to the curriculum. So that's a two-year change. For our elementary math curriculum, it took us four years to change. You have to pilot things. You have to check out who is serving well. Are all populations growing with this and so forth? So you get the idea. It's multiple years for big educational changes, and we have done similar level changes in seven weeks. Weeks. That means people are not sleeping to get this done. We're trying to do it as thoughtfully as we can, and we could not do it without such a strong team and such good collaboration. So big, huge thank you to the teachers, the principals, guidance counselors, our back office staff that made all the software come online, our secretaries and so forth, and our union leadership. And I think, just as a last note, as I look back on my professional career, this probably will be the time when I'll be the most proud of when we all came together and worked our hardest and did our very best with the information that we had at the time for students. So I'm really appreciative of all the thanks and happy to answer any questions. Or I can talk for another half an hour.
Hi, Kristin, David Modell here. Thank you for that summary. Very helpful.
Oh, you're welcome.
So a couple of questions come to mind. One is, I know we're only in Phase Two now, and I only have the data point of one daughter in high school. But some educators in high school are already doing sort of online classes and some aren't.
Yeah.
It's been like a month almost. So I'm just curious what, maybe it's a Mike question, what kind of guidance, you know, there's teachers that are just simply putting assignments online and not actually conducting classes. I mean, what's up with that, basically?
Yeah, yeah. So I'll, let me try to answer, and then Mike, please fill in what I forget. So in a change like I'm talking about, like you're talking about going virtual with actual teaching, there's a lot of training that has to happen. And so I think that we're there now where teachers have had a lot of support, particularly at the high school for remote teaching. So there's been workshops in Screencastify. There's been on Zoom. We got the and so forth. So Phase Three, I would say the biggest change that all high school parents will see, and all parents will see, is two times a week, live classes, 30 minutes in length, taught by each teacher. So it will be made consistent. So like any change, you have your pioneers who are out there in front, sort of showing us the way, doing a great job, you know, making mistakes and refining the system. And now we feel confident that we can roll it out for all teachers and therefore all students. Mike, what would you add?
Yeah, I think that's, that's well said. You know, I would say overall, the vast majority are, even though it wasn't a mandate, we're using some form of Zoom. Some people shied away initially, a little concerned. Others dove in and then pulled back after like a negative Zoom bombing experience. But, you know, but overall, as you alluded to, the, you know, we emphasize connection in the beginning. And then, you know, using this time to, to use, you know, to give, to make sure everyone's giving and then using the office hours, which if you've seen the blog, you can see there's a schedule that has, you know, changed a couple of times. And after getting input from quite a few, we've settled on, on the one that I just recently posted. And luckily, it, the twice a week is in line with what we're going to do Phase Three, so that was a little luck there. You know, and really, why we settled on that is, I think it's a, it's a healthy balance that doesn't require people to sit in front of a computer for too long. You know, we want to be mindful of that. I do know one district that has kids between four to five hours a day online and on Zoom, and it's, it's a disaster. I can, I can tell you that. So as Kristin pointed out, I think we'll see 100% adoption soon. And, you know, I think we're, I don't have a number, but I know we're close to that at the moment, so.
Okay, thanks. And then just switching gears, looking to the future, Kristin. So if there's, if we're, well, I would say regardless of whether we're in person or remote, but when the students come back in the fall, in terms of curriculum, what's the plan to address and close gaps that have occurred in the, you know, semester we're in before you start the new stuff? Particularly, obviously, my interest is high school. Like, you know, when you're in 10th grade, you know, you're on to a whole new curriculum, right? So how do you, what's your plan on that?
Yeah, so we've tried to build in structures along the way so that we can do that planning, David. So as I said, we capture what we're doing now, and we're doing the prerequisite and power standards. And from the Department of Education guidelines, we are doing 100% of what they are recommending that we do. So from, from the state level, we're fine. We're great. We've accomplished everything that we need to accomplish already. But as you know, we often, always work above the level of the state curriculum. And so we, our teams have made those choices about what we're doing and what we're not doing, what are the most critical pieces. And then, so that's the one part of planning for the fall. And then the other part of planning for the fall is figuring out where kids actually are. So we're hoping to do some kind of assessment at the end of the school year, probably in the beginning of June or something like that, totally online, and it is only for planning purposes. No grades, no nothing. We just need the information on where kids are, particularly in their reading, writing, and math skills. So that's what we're trying to do. We already have those screeners in place because that's how we figure out who, which kids are below grade level or not meeting benchmark. So we're used to using those tools, and we're hoping to administrate them, administer them so that over the summer and even really starting now, we can think about, okay, however learning happens, if we are remote, if we're actually there in school in the fall, if we're staggered, that it can be seamless. So there will be some content reinforcement, as there always is in the beginning of the year in every class. And likely, that'll go on a little bit longer because if there are things that kids need to know from, you know, the seventh grade math curriculum for the eighth grade algebra that most kids take, then we're going to have to teach those. So we're identifying the most important things for kids to know and then reinforcing those in the beginning of the year. And through our inquiry-based blended learning, we hope that no matter if we are virtual or we are actually at school or somewhere in between, that it will happen seamlessly. We'll go back and forth on this learning platform. Feedback will be given. Grades will be given. And you can expect that kids coming out of next school year, 2021, will have had all the important skills and content that, that we have come to be used to in Concord.
So, I mean, just one last, just one last, sorry, one last follow-up. So like if, if a kid has had earth science in ninth grade this year and goes on, I don't know, chemistry, biology, whatever, the 10th grade curriculum.
Yeah.
How do you remediate earth science if they're already in the chemistry class?
Yeah, yeah. So that's probably the best example. Another good one is in social studies in the high school. So we're, you know, typically used to studying one thing. Most, most ninth graders, for example, take world cultures or most ninth graders take earth science. And then the next year, they have a completely different course with different content. So they take world history or they take biology, for example. And so what we're going to have to do is rely very heavily on the leadership of the department chairs in those departments to help the teachers identify what it is from those previous courses that they need to reinforce in the fall. So for example, there's some pieces of biology that you need for chemistry, and you just have to have them. But we have chemistry teachers, teaching, teaching chemistry. So they will need to fully understand those biology concepts, for example, in order to teach them. And so I think we're pretty good, looking at all the plans that I see from, that all the department chairs are sending me right now. I feel like we're gonna, this year, hit all the main ideas. And so we need to come back in the fall and reinforce all of those ideas before we can move forward. So it's a lot of work over the summer.
Yeah. If I may add too, because I think it's, it, you know, it's obviously something that gives me the most anxiety as a result of all this. And, you know, that planning has started. As a matter of fact, I had a meeting about it yesterday. You know, and now I'm just gonna tell you some of the brainstorming that was going on. And none of this is, is etched in stone by any stretch of the imagination, and it hasn't even been brought before Lori or Kristin. But, you know, we talked about the potential of using the first month of school really to fill gaps and did explore the idea of could we run two schedules, and that's not possible. And what I mean by that is, you know, finishing up earth science, for the example you provided, and then moving on to your next class. And that's just too challenging on too many levels. I do think it's, we have to really identify, as Kristin talked about, what are the essential concepts? We can't replicate missing this much school and say that they're going to get the exact same experience they had in earth science. However, what are the most, what are these essential concepts they need going forward to make sure that we're, we're meeting their needs? Quite honest, it's a challenge, but it's one that I am excited about. I think it's, this has given us a little bit of an opportunity to really focus on skills over content, which is very important. Now, they're both important, but really using this to, to work on skills. And I think the first month of school is, we're gonna have to make sure that we're using all resources to fill gaps. And that will start by the STARS assessment and a couple of subjects that Kristin alluded to. And I think we're gonna have to use all resources we have to provide students with, you know, with, to identify these gaps and then to backfill them. And that's, you know, I'm not going to give you all the acronyms in our school, but we are well-resourced and we have the Mark and the CIRC, and we have opportunities to, to support kids.
That's a good question. I think, I think you've answered it, but I just wanted to be sure. So the attempt for the, if we have an entirely remote learning experience starting in the fall, the intent is to try to teach 100% of what we've been doing.
Yep.
I assume something drops off. You've mentioned skills versus content. And I suspect that the goal is to ensure 100% of the skills and utilize the content necessary to get there. But could you just explain that a little bit? Because I think that's a critical piece of the equation as we look at it.
Yeah, yeah. Happy to. So absolute focus on making sure all kids, all kids have the skills that they need. And in a minute, I'd love for the elementary and middle school principals to talk about the RTI systems at their, at their schools. But if we, if we look at these screeners that we're giving and making sure that every kid is at grade level or above with their English Language Arts and Math skills, in particular. Real big on that, and I think we're, we're doing well. And using this adaptive software that will be available to families over the summer if they want to do some extra work there. And then in the fall, we have RTI systems where students who are below grade level or at grade level for the state are supported by other instructors. So that's the kind of content piece, I mean, the skills piece. But your question was really the skills versus the content. So this kind of exacerbates a lifelong issue in education, which is that, I'll use the social studies area because it's the most egregious example. There's a balancing act that you have to do between, with content. You can either do breadth of topics, you know, I just described world history is our sophomore year. World history, the history of the entire world is our sophomore year history curriculum. So, so what do you put in that? You know, do you do three seconds on the dynasties of China? You know, how do you decide what's there? And what we've learned over the years is that it's really the depth and the experience of kids learning that lasts. We have a, it's kind of a joke, like, is it going to last for 40 minutes, 40 days, or 40 years? And so if you go deeper, if you have lots of rich experiences on a subject, you're more likely to remember that content for 40 years and have it be useful to you in your life. So that's where we've kind of come down, is to go deeper into some subject areas, making sure that kids have the skills to learn other subject areas when they are interested in. But I'd love to have the elementary folks talk about how you support kids who are, are working below grade level.
Before we do that, can I just ask my colleagues, do you have any questions at this stage specifically for Kristin? We can certainly come back, but I just want to make sure that if there's anything sort of overarching that you'd like to know, given what we've just
A few questions, but I don't want to stop the flow. Mine are such that we can loop back to them.
Good. Anybody else?
One, one quick, if you don't, oh, Sam, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, please.
One, one thing, you know, this is the worst part of Zoom. You go. No, I'll go. Oh, good. I will say real quick, I think Kristin said it well, but I really think this is, you know, I look at this spring almost as like, as a training for the fall. And, you know, we're doing, we were caught flat-footed by the pandemic, and I think we've done overall reactive And I think we've done overall reacted, you know, very swiftly and, and done, and done a good job. But I do feel like it's gonna prepare us for what is likely to come, another period like this in the future. And I think that instead of kind of, you know, meeting the 25%, I do feel like we can be more productive after kind of learning what's, what we can do and what we can't do, what works well, what doesn't well. And, you know, we have a whole document sharing best practices. And so I feel like in the, in the fall, we'll be just, we won't be caught flat footed. We'll be much better prepared to, to do this really well.
I think additionally, based on what Kristen was saying earlier, how some of our best practices are already in place and some of those in the vanguard, we've really been able to leverage with our RTI work. We have systems in place now that will enable us to quickly turn them on based on the progress monitoring data that we'll gather during this year with the intelligent software, but also as we return to school. And then have groups that are created based on the data. And we can enable greater intensity, duration, frequency of interventions focused in on those gaps. So that's where, you know, we've got some good, good pieces in place that we can now leverage moving forward. And it's gonna be even more so a priority for us because of, you know, we, we can't make up for this lost time. What we need to do is have something in place where we can target the needs of the kids when they return to school.
I just had a quick question. Just want to make sure, okay. So I, Eva Mustafi had a quick question. So I, I wanted to say thank you for all the work that you're doing. A, a big part of normalizing the life and well, and the wellbeing of our students really has been depending on the school and, and the scheduling, the routine and those face-to-face contacts with the teachers that really support, you know, feeling of normalcy in, in this pandemic for, for the kids. And I can't stress it enough how important that piece of connection with the teacher is. I, I, I have a question. If, are we going to have more face-to-face meetings? You were talking about the two meetings per, per week with each, each teacher as those really set, set a routine for the kids. And also is the, is the platform going to be a Google classroom that parents will have more access to the kids? I'm talking about high school, to the kids' scheduling and what is happening. I can tell personally that I have seen some, some teachers send out emails that parents are CC'd and beginning of the weekend. It's definitely can see that the school is moving to that next phase. That has been very, very helpful because kids cannot regulate themselves. So we can take, it, it becomes a little easier for parents to, to help the kids, especially if you have more than one. So if you can speak to more of those face-to-face contacts with students, the platform. And also when we go into phase four, for example, phase three and phase four, if, if, are, are we going to be talking about some, some new ways when it comes to attendance as kids are going through? Cause we have a set policy, right, about attendance, how kids are supposed to attend. Are, are we going to make some changes? Are you looking at making some changes as, you know, family members may be getting sick? There may be other turbulences in some, some of the students' homes. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm happy to start the answer and hopefully my colleagues will jump in. Yes, you're gonna be seeing a lot more face-to-face moving forward. That's what we're working on now, getting everybody devices, getting everybody training. And so I think, for example, our high school math teachers, it's really hard to teach math remotely because you can't type something on the screen. So we got them all tablets that they can write on and they, and the kids can see. They can screen share the, with them so that it works much better than through Zoom. So those kinds of things we're, we're having in place. And so that's kind of the content area, the academic time. And then you'll see a lot more interest-based groups and the, I think the structures you so carefully described that really hold students, what, what do they want to do? Do they want to go to a writing club? Do they want to have, you know, an art class? So you'll see a lot more of those. The clubs have started at the middle school. Ask Justin to talk a little bit about that. So yeah, I, I think you'll see a lot more about that. And then in terms of the learning platform, yeah, we're, we're looking at Google Classroom, extending Google Classroom into the elementary school for our older elementary students. And a lot of teachers are already using it, frankly. That's how we know it's gonna work and are finding it really helpful. I had one fourth grade teacher say to me, thank goodness, I had already implemented Google Classroom because it has organized my students. It's given sort of that, you called it self-regulation, I would say executive function or the organizational part to it. So I, I think that's been, been super helpful. But Justin, can you talk about, talk about that at the middle school a little bit?
The clubs and activities?
Yep, and also the RTI.
Yep. So I'll start with the club, clubs and activities and the social ways in which the middle school is engaging with kids. So we are having our advisory groups, which is called home base. A lot of our advisors are middle school advisors, adults, their tutors, the PE teachers, the art teachers, the core teachers are still connecting with our kids in that way. We're running about, I think about nine clubs right now virtually. We're doing student trivia with prizes in the middle of the day. You know, we really followed the lead of a trail that was blazed by the high school and really trying to find a way to, you know, involve the students and give them that face-to-face time with their peers and with the adults that they have a good rapport with here at the middle school. You know, and whatever the fall looks like, I, I think we're gonna be set up to continue. You know, because right now the projections has us, even if we're in the building, we not, we might not be running after-school clubs or activities. So we would continue to run them virtually as well. In terms of RTI, you know, to be honest, you know, I'm, I'm thrilled at what the middle school has been building since, you know, winter of 2018. You know, the families and their concern that, you know, their children or their child is gonna be behind grade level, quite frankly, aligns to the research in a community like ours to why some families will ask for a special education evaluation or eligibility into special education. It's supposed to be about disability. But in a community like ours, we see the number of parents who ask for an evaluation solely based upon the fact that they believe that their child is behind or not at grade level. We have to, we have to stay close to that and we have to get out in front in presentations to our families about how robust the RTI will be available to all students in the fall and how using data, using screeners, there's going to be regular education intervention groups offered to our students. We have a brand new master schedule that we implemented this past fall in sixth grade that allows for all my core teachers to teach intervention groups. And I cannot stress how significant that is, that, you know, if you have a child who is behind or needing intervention in say math, that you get them in front of the math licensed teacher. And that's not taking anything from the special education teachers. But I think special education teachers should be available in front of students with disabilities and with students who need specialized instruction. Whereas the kids who are behind grade level or need like a trimester to get caught up, they can be put in front of trimester RTI classes taught by the core classroom teacher, which is not at all, you know, a stress or making an impact on a special education budget or our special education numbers, which quite frankly are too high as it is. So I think every district needs to have a plan in place of making sure that when we return or after parents get a sense of, you know, where their own child is, you know, before they request the special education evaluation, they best understand what the school already has in place to support all students, but certainly the students who are, if the data suggests, are behind in grade level. That master schedule that we implemented this past fall, fall 2019 in sixth grade, is being transitioned over to the Sanborn Building and is going to be available to our seventh graders next year as well. We're doing a slow transition in the middle school to this master schedule where, again, to state it explicitly, all the core teachers are being dropped down to four, teaching four, and their fifth class is either an intervention or enrichment class. You know, we used to have a capacity of serving and supporting anywhere between 15 to 25 students in a grade of about 250 in RTI before this master schedule phased in. And now our capacity is somewhere upwards of 75 to 100 students that we can support. And again, if appropriate, keep out of the special education pipeline. Because again, even families who go into the special education process because they feel like they have a child's behind in grade level, don't actually understand everything that special education is going to offer in a period of almost three years is the typical amount of time that students are in special education. You know, whereas if we can give them and deliver a 12-week intervention to get the student back at baseline, back at grade level, that's the more effective and mainstream approach.
So I'll just grab a couple of other pieces of Eva's question, if that's okay. The attendance piece, we're very aware of for the fall. I'm, I'm hearing reference from Desi as to their approach because it is a piece of the accountability formula, which they relaxed this year. And I expect they'll be considering the same. As far as we are concerned as a district, parents can excuse absences and we would continue that process and obviously be very supportive of kids. I think the gift of what we're building is if individual kids are out of school while school is in session, typically this remote blended inquiry option is gonna allow for all of the flexibilities, both in the aggregate group, the partial aggregate group, or at the individual level. And then the second piece of your question that you asked about was parents' access. Right now, we're relying on Aspen to be that communication tool because the middle and high school are actively recording levels of engagement by kids in Aspen. So you should be able to see what your child's completing and that will continue and even in phase three increase. So that's the, that's where we are right now. Google Classroom can be part of that communication, but just as in the traditional environment, we're also trying to build those independent skills of kids. But if individual parents have questions, I think they should reach out to the teachers and ask, you know, my child really needs more support in this environment. I can see in Aspen, things aren't really going great. How can I connect with you? And we're trying to find ways that works for everybody. So.
Can I jump in quickly, Lori? Cause as a parent, this has come through to me as a middle school parent. But through Google Classroom, I was somehow sent a link to get a, you know, a weekly summary of what my child is doing. And that has been hugely helpful because every Friday I get this Google Classroom summary and it says, here are any outstanding assignments and here's what's coming up next week. So that's been really helpful for me to be able to say, oh, what happened to your art assignment? Or whatever it may be. And then know what's coming next week. So that is an option in Google Classroom. I don't know if it's sent out at every level somehow, but that's been very helpful.
Great.
So, and I guess since I was talking, I'll continue. I was gonna ask a question earlier about what extra resources we might need in terms of filling the gaps. So all this RTI discussion is really helping that. We've heard a lot about it from the middle school. I know the elementary principals are gonna talk about it too. I'm curious to hear more at the entry, elementary level as well as at the high school level. And then also to understand as we increase RTI support now, and especially in the fall, does that mean anything in terms of resources hiring? Are we just reallocating what people are doing and when? Or does it mean that we're looking at resources and hiring or anything any differently?
So I can talk about the curriculum resources and I'd love the principals to talk about the human resources, the actual teachers.
Both, right.
So we're keeping a spreadsheet of all the costs associated from a curriculum point of view for curriculum materials. So most of what you would guess we're using is our online software programs, subscriptions to library checkout systems, eBooks, you know, really a lot. Right now, that's about $100,000. So pre-K to 12, I'm looking at about $100,000 in costs. And some of those we already would spend. You know, we already buy, for example, some math software at certain places, but we didn't do it for everybody. We already bought Lexia, for example, the reading software that we use pre-K to 12. But now we have it for everybody. So, you know, it was a tool we relied on particularly at the elementary and, and also in special education, and now we're buying it for everyone. So some of them are, are new costs and, but mostly they're extended costs for more licenses, more kids on and, and so forth. So, so I would say, yes, there are some additional costs associated with remote learning in terms of materials. And, and, and I, you got my best guess right now. We are currently negotiating with the 25 companies to see what we can do and bring those costs down. So we have a lot of good people working on that. And so that's the, the materials point of view. And maybe the principals can address the human resources.
Great, thanks.
So I'll, I'll say at the high school, which RTI is, is new for the, well, it's what, we're entering, this is year two. What we have done is we've taken, we've made the decision to run some classes a little larger and carving out RTI positions. So we have a, a point five English and a point five math. Individual who's dedicated to doing nothing but RTI. And it's evolved a little bit too. We did have a retirement. And we have the individual who was, it's not official, Lori has to, has to do the final part of this. But we, we changed that position a little bit. We required a dual certification in English and special ed. And we have a veteran member in the building who will allow us to expand that a bit. You know, we would always love more resources to do more of it. You know, that's, but you know, we, we do have a lot of, you know, we have, we have other strat, other programs, or lack of a better term, that can help with RTI. But we have individuals who are dedicated to it. But then we have the MARK, which is the math resource center, for example, where kids can either be assigned or drop in. So that's a, an RTI strategy too, but.
So, and at the high school level, my, thank you, this is really helpful. I know Justin was talking about how fortunately a recent schedule change has allowed for more RTI. At the high school, will it basically be using that, assuming that more kids are going to need RTI to kind of fill this gap? Using, they would use studies and the MARK and the, I, I, what's the other one called for ELA? I forget. Yes. They would study time during studies to go there? Or is there gonna be more organized?
Yeah, so there's the challenge. The challenge is the scheduling component. And this is going to allow us, and when I say this, it's by offering the STARS assessment at the end of the year, it'll allow us to schedule. And that will help with buy-in because, you know, we, you know, we, we inform parents, we communicate with kids, we have a meeting. And what can disrupt this literally is their lunch, right? They don't want to move their lunch. Or they, they really love the kids in their study. I mean, it can be that simple. And everyone agrees that, you know, this, the, the student could really benefit from this. It can still be a challenge. We feel like if it's scheduled into their schedules from the, from day one, they'd be less likely to opt out of it. And so this, this is gonna help with that.
That's great, terrific. Thanks.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
In terms of the support that's needed for an RTI model at the middle school, you know, we're, again, taking baby steps towards that. But, you know, this does, you know, get into the conversation of the new building and how important clean teams are. Because, you know, I'll speak to my own experience as a seventh-grade English teacher who had RTI about fifteen years ago. So if I have students in, let's say, my Period III class that were struggling with reading comprehension, they may assess into a second class with me, a teacher that they already have a relationship with, a teacher that they already have a rapport and trust with, and a teacher who holds a license. And those students would have me, again, a second day for like three out of six days for a trimester to hone in and work on those skills. And that's where, you know, having an RTI or intervention available in a team model, I think, is so significant than, you know, just kind of, you know, putting them, you know, with adults who might be off-team, who don't have a relationship. So, you know, we're building, we're literally building a building for this. And, you know, we are seeing our enrollment drop just a little bit, and that is the reason why there is capacity to drop a lot of our core teachers to four and have their fifth class be this intervention or enrichment. You know, because I don't want to forget all those students, you know, who might not assess into an intervention, you know, what do we do with them? You know, the answer to that is a robust elective program that, again, is taught by the licensed teachers, you know. So those students who are at grade level or even assessing above are still at a ceiling, and I think we have to be professionally obligated to grow them as well.
I feel like at the elementary level, we have a very robust RTI plan and model in place, and I feel like we're well-staffed for it, and we're ready to hit the ground running in the fall.
Yep, I can.
The only, no, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to essentially echo what Angel said, which is that we have a pretty robust program that's up and running, and I don't see us needing additional staff to do that. It's just thinking about how to use the staff maybe a little bit differently, but that it's something that we're pretty well-positioned to be able to tackle.
I have one more question, if I may. I have a question, is there a plan? Or can we have the teachers, the eighth-grade teachers in Carlisle, maybe connect with the transition team to see, you know, where are kids in Carlisle standing in terms of those skills and remediations that we'll be needing to help, you know, to help that transition into ninth grade? As we're also going through disruptions of education in our eighth-grade classes. I wonder if there are any plans to connect with Carlisle teachers and collaborate on how to get these kids screened. And so in June, if you're doing screening, RTI screening for the kids in Concord, can we do, you know, can we coordinate with Carlisle as well? Thank you.
Definitely, absolutely.
Yep.
That would be great if we could.
Yeah, I can talk about it generally, which is anytime we have a curriculum committee in Concord and Carlisle, we have members of our staff from preschool to grade twelve on that committee. And we generally, so I view social studies as an example, but science or STEM or anything, we outline what we're going to teach, and then we have all of those documents made available. Of course, we do a presentation to school committee, and we have the documents, and we share them with Carlisle. So in general, they know everything that we're teaching in terms of getting kids ready to enter the high school with their Concord peers. And so I feel like we have a good curriculum standpoint. Unfortunately, Carlisle members are not generally able to be in our planning committees because of when, you know, we meet and how far apart the districts are and so forth, although they have always been invited. And there have been wonderful, wonderful times when they have really supported us, and we've supported them. So I would appreciate, I mean, I would expect that that collaboration would continue. And I think in particular, your idea is a good one. It's not one that's come to my level at this moment, so consider it noted.
A few questions, if I might. Thank you very much for the nature of this dialogue, this exchange. It's something that I think we've worked hard to arrive at. Our agenda item was referred to as an overview, but I think we'd all agree this is a different kind of overview and necessarily so. So thank you for everybody being involved today. A couple of quick questions, and maybe I'm simply looking for comments, if not actual information. We talk about equity and access as a huge piece of our decision-making about what can be delivered, how it can be delivered, what kind of experience kids can have. We're at a ninety-seven percent participation level by some measure. Where are we at in terms of equity and access in some of its simpler forms such as technology access, which is our medium right now? I know equity and access is much more complex than that, but can we start there? Are we where we need to be?
I'll grab that, and then you guys, the rest of you can chime in. Certainly, grades six through twelve, we're a hundred percent solid. We had one or two students without internet access, and we've resolved that for them. So at the secondary level, we're solid. The elementary schools, when parents have asked that they didn't have a device for their child, we have provided, about how many have you handed out, would you say?
I've handed out ten and myself, and plan to do one more tomorrow.
Yep, approximately ten at the Willard as well. And then also, we reached out to families who have had difficulty with web access to sort out how they can get internet access as well.
We've done about twenty.
Yep. And then I think the next round, we are seeing signs of that we're going to continue to monitor our families, especially with elementary and younger kids trying to share a machine, either their work, you know, their personal adult machine challenges if they're trying to work and the kids are trying to be on our stuff, or multiple kids trying to share. So we're preparing and starting to respond to some of those requests.
I know from experience on both sides of the remote learning side that tech support matters. Have our tech support people modified their role and their availability to teachers?
I'm going to throw that to a couple of you because some of the technology specialists have been nothing short of phenomenal.
My technology specialist has gone above and beyond any expectation. So I have nothing but accolades for my tech specialist, who's also wearing the dual, playing the dual role of assistant principal at this time, and she's still managing to support everyone.
Well, it's very much, it's very much the response I thought we'd get, but I think it's important to hear it, so thank you.
Yeah, Terry Smoka at the high school has been amazing. And, you know, I could share a lot of the trainings that she's made with Screencast that's been really beneficial for staff, and she's just a great resource.
Yeah, and if I could add two other groups to that, part of this is we're using a whole bunch of tools. Like, you know, seven weeks ago, I'd never heard of Zoom, and all of a sudden, I'm spending my entire day on it. You know, there are several groups that have made this all possible, and certainly the tech specialists are number one. And they're all working tremendously hard. And there are other folks who have gone out and figured out, you know, what's the right software for checking out books? Our librarians have been leaders across the board at every level for this. Our curriculum specialists and department chairs have done a tremendous job figuring out what is the software or the websites or the licenses that we need and, you know, figuring out how to pilot it, figuring out if it's going to work for us on a larger scale, figuring out if it works with Google Classroom. So, you know, kind of vetting all of that. And then the last group is just our back office, like our secretaries, our finance folks, our tech folks at Ripley, making sure all the POs can go through so we can do all of this. So I would say everyone is sort of bending over backwards to provide support, and we're getting everyone's best work.
So I'm sure I speak for the entire committee when I say the implied appreciation is now expressed appreciation that we're getting more daylight on just how much everybody's doing. And I think thereby, the parent community is getting more daylight on it, and all to the good. So thank you very much. Lori, in terms of Desi guidance, there was some reference in the Friday, Desi guidance to half-day, not of content but of time. Am I correct about that? And does that guide us in any way? Or is that pie in the sky thinking on Desi's part?
No, that definitely guides us. It's consistent with their recommendation since all of this started. I think the days, the structure and content of the half-day is what's evolving. So Kristin and all of these leaders have been using that as reference, certainly since Phase Two, which is when Desi really started to put more direct input out to us. So we are aiming for that half-day mark in different forms. I think, as you've heard, our Phase Three overview, we're expecting the older kids to spend more time on Zoom and interacting in a technical environment with their peers and teachers. The elementary will still have a lot of ways that those three hours are being filled, mostly because three hours, you know, multiple hours a day for little kids isn't going to be developmentally appropriate. So that is definitely our target is half-day.
Good, thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
So, do we have any other questions for the team?
Yes, I've been waiting.
Oh, yeah. Hi, Cynthia.
So just a question on, so you've had two very recent developments, the guidance on Friday from Desi and then our survey. How much, you know, obviously, that's not a lot of time to respond to those two huge guidance points. How much of the discussion today has been informed by the survey?
Most of it. And the good news, I think, as we looked at the survey responses, it was all things that we were aware of and ready to talk about and plan for. What it did was highly, highly confirm that we were going in the right direction. So you've heard us reference all the themes that were in the survey. I think the good news there, too, is that they weren't in contradiction with the Desi guidance. I think the Desi guidance gave us the umbrella to make it our own, all aligned with the survey feedback. So I feel, and I'll let the others speak because you've had the same three to five days to process all of this that I have, I feel like it's all coming together, actually, really nicely. And once we're over this implementation of Phase Three, we'll be in a good place. Anybody else want to weigh in?
I can weigh in. Hi, everybody. So I just, from a special education standpoint, want to mirror a lot what Kristin said as far as the four phases and how we're working it and what we're trying to do. From a special ed standpoint, we're working in parallel with that, taking the core competencies, looking at access and equal access and how students can work with different timeframes, but work with accessing work and then break and then work and then break and working more face-to-face with both staff members and related services providers. Obviously, with the information that we found out, well, the guidance from Friday, in the information that we knew and thankfully was confirmed through the survey, we're working on guidance for just that beginning to happen. What I want to remind myself and remind others is that it's the buildings that are closed, not the schools. We're open. We've been trying to work with kids from a special ed standpoint. From a general ed standpoint, staff has been unbelievable, whether it's a learning center that was just put in place to support the curriculum for general ed in Phase Two, or whether it's been reaching out to a student who's dysregulated and just trying to make a connection to make sure that the student is okay and trying to make a new normal out of what's happening. The current performance, I think that Mr. Modell asked about that, and then I think Ava, you did as well at the high school level, when Kristin said we were going to take that end-of-year assessment. From a special ed standpoint, we have current performance as of the school closure. And what we will do is look at that assessment versus the end-of-year content, current performance, and see where, in fact, if there is a lag. Obviously, we're expecting some regression for all students in all areas, but let's see if we can close that gap, and we'll have more data to support that through those assessments. The only other thing I wanted to bring up was, Kristin, I made an acronym out of your, I call it IBL, as far as your learning plan, blended learning plan. So as far as that's concerned, but I wanted to talk about RTI just for a second. In a broader term, I wanted to explain really what response to intervention is. So in the base level of response intervention, we call it Tier One, which is kids who may or may not be at grade level. They may need minor glitches in their schoolwork to maybe help them access the curriculum a little bit better. That could be a change in seating, that could be closer, that could be, you know, just a tap on the desk as a reminder. And that's all still within the general ed curriculum, and that's all part of a general ed teacher's day-to-day life. That's what they do on the daily. A Tier Two intervention is just a little bit more. Maybe a student is struggling in a reading group, or maybe a student is struggling with access. And so maybe a reading specialist comes in and gives a word wall or does something to help that child access the curriculum. So Tier One and Tier Two is the majority, think of a triangle. It's the majority of our students. So Tier Three is that tip of the triangle, which is the special ed students. And those students need a little bit more to access the curriculum. They need specialized instruction. They need fewer, they need fewer questions on the paper. They need some guidance with the fill-in-the-blanks. They need a word wall. They may need a Batman sticker because Batman is a positive trigger for a student just as a reminder to keep on task. So tiered intervention is happening all the time at every single level from general ed, and special ed is when they're on the IEP, and that's kind of like the tip of the triangle. So I just wanted to get, just I understand it, but I just wanted to give a little bit more specific on that. Everyone was giving thanks, and I have to say, I can't thank the special ed team enough. The principals have been such a support, the vice principals, unbelievable. Kristin, Lori's leadership, it wouldn't happen without her leadership. But my intimate staff, my, you know, my Marys, my Ellen's, they're really doing some work, help with Aspen to help, you know, integrate with everything. Janet in the preschool, Marielle without a district, they're just, everyone, all the staff, the teachers and the tutors. But I do have to give a special kudos to Sue Howard. I'm sorry if I mentioned her by name if it's on recording. I don't want her to be embarrassed. She's a technology specialist, and she has worked with every single student to make sure their licenses for Lexia are up and running and giving a tutorial, mini-tutorial, because Lexia is the reading program we're working with from a standpoint of accessing blending words and decoding and. from a standpoint of accessing blending words and decoding and comprehension while we're out. So that has been a life changer for me. She's really helped me out a lot and helped our department out a lot. So that's what I have. If you guys have any questions, please feel free to answer. And I know I didn't get any questions, but I had to interject somehow. So thank you.
So I just have a question about the elementaries. I just want to, I think this is what I heard, we're pre K through two, we're going to start using CSO, is that correct?
That's the goal. We're going to need to provide some professional development to those who haven't used it. It might not be, we can get everybody on from Monday, but that is the goal of Phase Three.
Right, I was just going to ask that, you know, the timing.
Yeah.
You think you maybe 10 days, two weeks, maybe in some cases, right?
I I think it might be that for some of them. You know, I sort of, I have to smile because all of a sudden, things that we would have taken a year to roll out and pilot were like, yeah, sure, 10 days, yeah, we'll do that. We're still in discussion on getting feedback from the, especially the people who haven't used it yet, need exposure so they can tell us what they need for training. But we've got good examples already started at Willard with what Hannah Viva did for training. So I think we've got good tools to build off of.
And then three through five, is that going to be, teachers are now, some of them have not had Google Classroom, they need to set it up? Yeah, okay, so that's.
Yeah, a lot of, a number of them are using it. So we just have to fill in those who aren't.
Right, that's still, for some, that's.
Yeah. Yeah, for some it will be, and that's the feedback we need from them in terms of what they need for support.
Great, and I just have a question at the high school. Are the Mark and the Circ and the other one, I can't, I'm not sure of the acronym, accessible now? Or you're just looking at it for the fall?
For the for the fall. Now, there are some individuals that work in there that are meeting with kids. But essentially, we have tutors in there every period. And then we have, it's a duty for staff. So for example, yeah, so I don't have to explain. So not directly as like a mark setup at the moment.
Is there any expectation about clubs meeting?
Expectations, no. I don't know if you had a chance to see our new, the new office hours, but I'd put it in the chat, but there's no chat room. But there is space in our, it's every, let me pull it up, actually. So every day, it's called X Block on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. It's club activities for a free. So it is, it is an option. I know that some are still meeting. As a matter of fact, I just, I got an invite to the the finance club. So I think some are meeting more regularly than others.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So any other questions?
Yeah, quickly, while before I wrap up, I just wanted to reference it early on in this discussion. Kristin was about to pass it to the elementary school principals to talk about RTI. We've talked a bunch about it, and I, we we got a response. They got to weigh in briefly, just kind of on needing more resources or not. I just wanted to make sure that we haven't skipped anything that the elementary principals wanted to share with us about RTI, or did we cover all of that?
I think, thanks Heather for the opportunity. So I think we are fortunate, we have some good systems in place. We may have to reallocate some resources, but we are, you know, in a position where, speaking for Naomi and Angel, I don't think we're, we see ourselves asking for anything additional that with the progress monitoring data that we've been using, that we'll gather again at the end of this year, it's going to be a, you know, all hands on deck start of the school year. And but knowing the staff fully committed, we've got the resources, we instructional practices to do it, and committed to doing a good job. So but thanks for the additional opportunity. But we've been honing that for a while and very fortunate also that the teams work across buildings, just as we, you know, referenced earlier, how we have those in the Vanguard and Technology or those who are using different platforms. We also have really great strengths in teaching and learning and RTI specifically, in ELA and math. So I'm feeling pretty good. And Angel, Naomi, if you'd like to add anything different.
Yeah, I think the only thing that I would, I would want to add that I, I think we do this every year. But, you know, as we look at move ins, I think this year, maybe more than ever before, I'm going to be looking very closely at our class sizes and looking at numbers and just making sure that we're optimized to help students, particularly in the K to two grades. But I don't see a need for any additional staff. We just might need to be creative as we look closely at who's coming in and what our numbers are like.
Great, it's good to know.
Yeah, and I I think Matt touched on this a little bit. But, you know, we often, with our with our support staff, with our reading specialist, with our curriculum specialist, we use the beginning of the year to do a lot of of assessment. And that assessment will be really important this year. But I also think, you know, one of the things that we're we're looking to do, which Kristin talked a little bit about, is is making sure that we're gathering that assessment data, you know, now and and as the, before the year actually gets out. And so if we have that data, knowing that kids have have missed certain chunks, like we, I think that we might be able to actually start with the the RTI a little bit sooner than than we might. Like, we often spend the first six weeks assessing. And and I I think that we just have some opportunities to look at how we use our staff differently so that we can address this completely different need that we're going to be going into in the fall. But again, I really do feel like we have the the human resources to do that. We just are going to have to think about ways that we can perhaps use them a little bit differently. But but they're there.
And one last thing, Kristin was good enough to be creative and thoughtful in enabling some of these online resources to be available throughout the summer. So for those students who, you know, have the time, have the energy, have the conviction and parent support or whatever it might be, all these resources that are intelligent, thoughtful software that enable kids to move, progress based upon their their regular assessment that's done by an algorithm, for example, in Lexi or Dreambox, they'll continue. So it's not only what we'll have when the students arrive, but also have opportunities for kids to continue to grow during the summer in, you know, in asynchronous way, based upon the resources that Kristin and the technology team have put together that will enable the kids to continue to have access.
That's great. Thank you.
So I want to say it's great to have this team assembled in front of us. I I think you've informed us beyond what we expected today. And I often refer to you all as superstars. And what you've done over the last couple of months just confirms that even more. And I think we are in great hands as we work our way through this process to be ready for Phase Four if, God forbid, we're still doing remote learning come the fall. And I think we're in wonderful hands. And I know, you know, unlike evening meetings when you come visit us and we'll keep you here till midnight, your domains are moving quickly today and education's going on. I guess as your emails are buzzing and your texts are buzzing. And if there, unless there are any critical questions that can't be answered by Jared and Laurie, I would think we ought to let these guys get back to the job at hand.
Thank you for the kind words, Molly. And I'm glad to see that painting I painted for you is hanging right in behind you.
That's why, that's why I put it up there.
Yeah.
It's in the garage, Mike.
Thank you, everyone. Bye. Thank you all so much for being here. It was incredibly valuable. And like Molly said, I'm sorry we took so much of your time, but very, very.
All your support, too. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Anything we can do, be sure to reach out.
Yes.
Bye bye.
Wow, okay, back to, that was a great, really good discussion. Laurie, thank you for teeing it up and bringing everybody to us.
No, my pleasure.
Before we move on to budgets, Laurie, is there any? Tie that together, whether we're good to go.
We're pretty much good to go. I think my only last comment is the more, when I get an opportunity to step back from it a little bit, which I actually feel like I just got for the last while, so much of the groundwork of what's allowing us success right now is the work of the last few years. Like, the strategic plan is still driving our approach to all of this. Yes, we've had to rework the implementation of how it happens, but the core of everything is still based off of those same goals and objectives. And I think it's going to be really interesting as we get to, you know, where our heads above water here and can really reflect on where we are. We've, we're making big progress in some places and using the rest as the foundation for how we do it. So I just want to be, I think that's worth noting, and we'll capture it once we can pull back enough to do that. But that's made it really, really obvious that our guiding principles are the same, so.
Great.
Great, thank you.
So was there any other questions for Laurie? Why don't we move on to the budget conversation?
So I'd like to, I like to break this up sort of in two parts. FY20, sort of give you an overview of that, have a discussion. And then I can go into FY21, projections, the 112th budget. So as you know, right now, for FY20, we are still in closeout mode. I expect to have updated one, updated numbers for you all by mid May. Numbers have not changed significantly since my quarterly report. I do want to reiterate, though, that we are not paying for any services not rendered. This is an ongoing, there is an ongoing discussion about special ed tuitions. But at this time, there's been no cuts to any services. And some of our bills at the region are lagging a little bit, but we're pretty much caught up on that. I don't expect any cuts to FY20, but we don't know that for certain. But it will be very tough for legislature to make any cuts now that we're 10 months into the fiscal year. I think it's also time that we need to start having a least of discussion as to what the committee would like to potentially give back to the towns. To do that, though, there's a few things that I just want to bring up that may impact that. I'm expecting about a $68,000 loss in food service revolving account right now. We started the year with 121,000, and I'd like to replenish as much of that as I can. It's good to carry about three months' worth of expenses. This would come from the general fund, and I've always anticipated hopefully putting most of that money back. There's also been some talks about athletic spring coaches. Our projected obligation for spring coaches would have been 132,000, but two head coaching jobs are not filled. Therefore, 100% of the pay would be 118K. Districts are paying anywhere from 0% to 100%, but many are still waiting on the legislature's numbers. If we were to pay, say, 25%, it would be 29,000. 30% would be 35,000, 40% would be 47,000.
Jared, can I just speak on why we would even consider that since the the season was canceled? The spring coaches got engaged with kids as school closed because the season would would have potentially started. And they've stayed engaged with kids, and they're doing a lot of virtual workouts and a lot of really great social, emotional, and physical work with them. So as Jared said, in talking with like districts, the range is, you know, everything from nothing to full pay. So I wanted to put that on your radar for a thought. We don't have to make a decision right now, but I didn't want to make that decision in isolation either. So that is one of the things for us to figure out is what what we think we could do or what you, what you want to do.
So Laurie, to that point, I think the next part of this conversation would be to learn from you and Mike and Aaron what's been done to look at a decision for all that affects the actions of most. Because I don't think it's been led from the top as to expectations. But we'd want some, what fairness, I suppose, would be the appropriate word.
Why don't I do some information collection through Aaron in terms of what each coach has been doing and give you a better idea of what that looks like? And then we'll all be more informed and we can go from there.
Yeah, and and I would urge, if I might urge you to make certain that Aaron understands we're not advocating to help with a decision per se that's going to change what they do. Rather, we just want to get a snapshot of what they have been doing.
Yeah, and to some of what you just did so wonderfully, I think we want to be sure we're very appreciative because these folks went in with no idea of what was happening and have stuck with it. So thank you. We'll follow up.
Laurie, the same metric, I think, needs to extend to people who are running clubs versus those who are not. Because I can see that is the same thing.
Yep.
I think those teachers or staff members who are investing in running the clubs should be recognized. So same, I think.
Good point. Thank you.
What I'm hearing is it would be good to get some information and see that, you know, that people are, you know, there is a sort of a majority of folks who are doing something with kids. And and we can all be thinking about what we would recommend. And at some point, we probably should vote on that.
Yep.
So whether it's the next meeting or the meeting after.
Great. Sorry, Jared.
No, true. And just finishing up with athletics, we have about $70,000 in user fees that we hope to reimburse by Friday. The reason why it might not be as high as you may all think is because of a lot of the families have hit our cap after the winter. So we're hoping to get those out by this Friday. We started the athletics with $58,000, which is healthy. And that's another thing that I'd like to replenish as much as possible. In addition to those two points, we can prepaid tuitions for FY21 collaboratives. We can pay full. I don't believe we have any tuitions to collaboratives right now. High school, but we can pay up to three months on all others. So that's usually something that we have done in the past. Our E and D right now is just about 4%. But going into next year, 5% would be best. And lastly, we carried about $600,000 in circuit breaker over. I would like to carry at least that amount over for next year, but we can carry up to just over $1 million because that is what we received in receipts this year. So those are, among other things, those are some of the things that I'm wrestling with and will bring to you all. But it's it's still very fluid. Overall, we are in, we are in, for the situation, we are in good, we have options.
So Jared, from my view, it's pretty simple, right? I I see no reason not to go right to the max on E and D. It's just, you got the cash and there's, we have the statutory authority. Dry powder is everything. So to me, it's like a no brainer to go to the max. That's not that much, right? That's 300K, something like that, right? So then the decision becomes some balance between prepay and return to towns. And I guess my my feeling on the subject is that, again, I I don't know what 20, nobody knows what 21 is going to look like, nobody knows what 22 is going to look like, nobody knows what the towns, you know, there's all these unknowns, and we're our own district. So we're not, it's not like Concord K through eight or Carlisle K through eight, you know? This is its own district, and it has to make sure it does what it needs to do to be sort of in the best position. So I'm actually an advocate of prepaying what we can with the caveat that I don't think we should prepay 100% of the bill because I, again, I think we should have some reserve. All the, I've had this conversation with with Laurie and other people, but all the private schools, the out of district schools are experiencing a similar situation to what we're experiencing in that most of their costs are fixed and they're honoring them. But a lot of their, you know, a sizable minority of their costs are not fixed, are variable, and they don't incur them. So until we know what school looks like, I don't think we should blindly repay pay the 100%.
We can only do three months.
What's that?
Three months would be on those.
Okay, is that the most you can prepay is three months?
Except the collaboratives, which is minimal if, I don't even think we have.
So, all right, that makes it even easier. I would, you know, prepay the three months, prepay what you can. And then let's talk to the towns about what we give them back. I mean, really. I mean, really, there isn't that much wiggle room. You can't hold E and D above a certain limit, you can't prepay above a certain limit. And the towns do need cash, but we, we should preserve everything we can to make sure our fiscal 21 is, you know, secure. And to me, that's kind of it. I don't think it's that complicated.
I think that's really clear, David, and I would agree wholeheartedly. I think if anybody has a differing opinion or wants to explore that a little more, we probably ought to do it right now because Jared's sort of looking at this and thinking about closing up. We can, if there's anything that needs to be voted, we can do it down the road. But I think just as guidance, it would be helpful that, you know, to know that we're roughly on the same page here.
I'd ask Jared to keep working on that premise.
Cynthia, you're good with that?
Yep, I am.
And I don't.
I'm on board as well. Yep, that makes sense to me.
Great. Okay, so that's great.
I should, so I should have some updated numbers to bring you all for the next, next meeting or shortly thereafter.
Just a question about the reimbursements for athletic fees for people who are listening to this or watch it in the future. How will they, how will those reimbursements go back to families? What should they be looking for, a check or?
Correct. So many, I want to say 75 plus percent, if not more, have paid through PayPal. So they would see it on their credit card. So that's a good point. Maybe I somehow send out something to parents or something to look for that or have Aaron communicate that. We'll put out something for them to look for that. And then if they pay by check, then they will be reimbursed by check. The check will take a little bit longer. Checks would probably take five to seven days. If I get the warrant done on Friday, it would hopefully be in the mailbox by Tuesday. And then we're at the mercy of the mail.
Which for now is still uprights. Okay.
Wally, one other thing I, and we don't have to get into this in depth right now. I think at one of our meetings, we need to talk about what a 112th budget looks like at the region.
I'm going to explain that or no? No?
Wally, what's the preference of the committee? Do you want to hear some today or put it off? Just I'm watching the time. It's up to you all. We can do it now if you'd like.
My feedback would be that I'd like to hear a little bit more from the town of Concord and the town of Carlisle in terms of, I think this is a huge, big picture thing. It's not just us in a vacuum.
That's true. Jared's educated me that there are some nuances to the region that are different than the municipality. So we just want to.
That's what I'd like to hear about then. Yeah.
We should share that with you.
Yeah.
Sooner we know these things, the more we can.
Yeah.
And 112th budget is in the event that we don't pass a budget before the end of the fiscal year. And then it is concerning to me what that means for obligations.
Yeah. So I'll give just a brief summary then. So we had a, we had a phone call yesterday with all the regional school districts in Massachusetts. And right now, basically, we're assuming a 112th budget. And what that means is, is we have to, we have to send something to Commissioner Riley, a number of things about our proposed budget, about our assessments, about our debt, FY 20 numbers, et cetera. He wants that by June 1st. And what he does is then he goes ahead and he sets a 112th budget. Unless you have significant costs during the summer, they told us, don't anticipate any more than the 1/12th of the FY 20 budget. And what that means is in July, if we don't have a town meeting for both towns, so both towns have to pass the budget, we would get 1/12th of the FY 20 budget. We cannot spend more, if your budget is 30 million, you cannot spend more than 1/12th of that in July. If you don't spend the 1/12th, that rolls into August and that will roll into September. We spent about $2.2 million last July, so we would be in good shape with that number. I wouldn't ask for any more of an increase. So we're, in fact, I was talking to the team this morning. We're working on getting all this information together so we can get it to the commissioner's office as soon as possible. And they're also going to have some webinars in the future weeks about what exactly that they are looking for. So, and I also wanted to quickly talk about, really quick, is we put together what happened with all the loss in revenue in 2010. So we lost in 2010, we lost about 2% in chapter 70, which amounted to about 54,000. Chapter 71 reimbursement went to 58%, which was a loss of about 81,000. And then they cut circuit breaker 38,000. So the total that was taken away was 498,537. But they also had ARRA funds that they subsidized that of 322,561. So the net loss was really only about $176,000. I'm not saying that it's going to be more or less than that, but those are numbers that I'm prepared for. And if that is the case, then I think we're going to be okay. And again, the reason for that is because we do our budget so early in the fiscal year, well before the initial governor's budgets come out. And I'm always very conservative about that because you never know something like this could happen. So once I have more information, I will reset my chart and let you know what that looks like. But we are, we could be okay.
So Jared, I'm assuming then you're going to have that June 1 document out the door on the premise that it might be necessary. And, and I believe that's the last day that the moderator might push town meeting forward yet again.
Right.
Okay.
We just want to get ahead of it and I'll have, it actually has to come from Dr. Hunter, but we'll get all the information and if we can just get it to them and hopefully not need it, that would be great. But we just want to get ahead of it.
We were in a conversation yesterday with Concord's town moderator weighing the pros and cons of a challenging, even a June 22 challenging environment to do town meeting. And this was the discussion of what the 112th budget meant to the town and what it meant to us. And really just try, no decisions were made at all. A lot of bantering of what the pro, the pros are and the cons are, knowing that at minimum, social distancing and all the, all the pieces we would expect would, would pertain. We, I think are, want to either or both are going to reach out to Carlisle and have some of that same, same discussion. Because to your point Cynthia, it's all obviously done in coordination with one another. So there's a lot more to come on this, I think, but that, all the, all the right discussions are happening. And I think it's the same as many of our other situations where plans A, B, and C are getting built on trying to make the best decisions possible.
Because. Quick question. What's, sorry, if we do go forward with the 112th budget, Jared, in terms of our run rate, you said we'd be fine in July, but are there any months, you know, in the first half of the year even, when we tend to run at higher than the 12th?
We were talking about that. If we get to December, then we're in trouble. We think we're, our, our cash flow, our run rate until the middle of winter, right now, we think we're okay.
Okay.
A lot of our debt, just so you know, is paid in, in like June. So we're fine really until then.
Okay, got it.
Concord meeting, I'm just asking a quick question about Concord. If the town revenues are severely impacted, do you have concerns about K through eight?
No, well, depends on what budget we have.
Right.
Because we, I don't depend on any revenue other than theirs, the general fund budget, if that makes sense. So once they set a budget, I'll have a better idea. It's, in a way, it's apples and oranges sort of. But, so I don't know if I'm concerned yet.
Okay.
It does go back to the conversation of because so much of the tax base is residential that, and because of the demographic of the community, there's a likelihood that most people will be able to pay, which having lived some of this conversation in a very different demographic 10 years ago, the local revenue dropped off enormously and we were in crisis going forward. And I think to Concord's just really run a really sound fiscal stability, very much as Carlisle has. But to the K eight conversation, Concord's in great shape with free cash and a whole number of other rainy day options. So more to come for sure.
You want to move on to 21 or?
Oh, that was the 21 discussion.
Yeah, I think we kind of merged them all together there. Yeah.
But I can take questions on that again, it's sort of the same as for David and Eva. Eva, I, we're still waiting on the ways and means. We're just making assumptions, but until they put something out, we have no idea what's going to happen with circuit breaker with chapter 70, with chapter 71. So we, we really have no updates yet on the revenue piece. It's really just about the 1/12th at this point. Just making sure we're, we're ready for that and have all of our paperwork done.
You're talking about circuit breaker for 21?
For 21.
Right.
Yeah. I don't expect there to be any cuts this year.
Right. I agree with you. I mean, my, you know, my read from the Carlisle side is that, what you said. There's 20, 20 will have no change.
Right.
21, I mean, we'd be wise to model nothing, you know, I mean, basically. And then if we get something, great. So. And of course, the towns are, got more to lose in a way. I mean, I, tell me, so the district, because the towns in the town budget, they're the recipients of chapter 70, not the schools, but in the district, you get your own chapter 70.
Correct. Yeah.
So like I said earlier, I think, you know, we should be as bulletproof as we can. And we should also try to give the, you know, we have to anyway, give the towns back what we have extra because they'll need dry powder and we just, I recommend, certainly from the Carlisle side, I think there is the time when we should have a joint meeting, either with FinCom or Board of Selectmen on the Carlisle side, when we have a little more clarity. On the Concord side, I'm not clear whether, which body would be the appropriate body, but I think it would be also a wise thing to, to schedule that prior to town meetings. So everybody kind of understands where we're at, is my advice.
A question about the special ed, our district special ed. Are we going to, is there some process to assess? Let's say we're going to a remote environment in the fall. Is there a way to assess what each of those programs has done to provide service remotely? And whether or not we need to rethink who's providing service to our students?
So I guess I'll, do you want me to answer, Jen? I, I think twofold. One is Desi guidance has been very strong up until now on out of district approach. And I expect that they're going to continue to be very strong about that. I, their premise is very much about maintaining programs that we will have access to later for if we fail to fund them, they will all, you know, their, their jeopardy will start to happen on them. I think if we get into a second, you know, a phase four of this with them, we're going to talk on what they're offering. I know we're keeping very close to all of our out of district settings through our out of district coordinator and the, and Ruth's office. And when things have been going really well, we've been very impressed on the most part for what they're offering families and the supports. And I think, I think Wally, it's going to be a bigger discussion. It's an ongoing discussion right now with a lot of districts because for some districts, that money that's going to tuitions is going to make or break them in FY 20, never mind 21. And I think Desi's going to stay really close and involved, and I think we're going to continue to get guidance there. It's, it's a house of cards to a large extent. So if we stop, if, if people stop paying, there'll be no programs for our kids when this is all over and normal returns whenever that is, and kids can physically go to settings. So I, I feel pretty strongly, we're going to want to listen to Desi's input and bring that back to you. And yeah, is it going to get more challenging to send those kinds of dollars out for virtual? Yes, but I'm also, I got an email from a mom this morning of an out of district setting and with a really challenging, complex set of needs. She was raving over what the program was providing to her child. And it's not, it's not things that our people would have expertise enough in to do and replicate. So I think we still have to value what those out of districts are bringing and, and take it as it comes. But Desi's been very strong on this and all the media. They're talking both with the business managers and the superintendents. They're so worried that we're going to start pulling payment. So that's, that's my, you know, perspective at this point.
Can I just add something here? So I know that Desi has required the out of district schools to provide and submit directly to parents a plan of study. There is a format that this out of school districts have to follow with the information, how the services are provided. So there is, there is a feedback loop for our schools to receive that information and to see what, what services are actually being provided to the students in our district in those out of district placements.
Thank you.
We ready to move on to the next item?
Okay.
What are you taking away?
Sounds good. I'll jump to the next one then, superintendent evaluation. So we wanted, we all wanted to touch base on this again, just on process and try to figure out what this will look like for this year. First, so in one of our past meetings, at some point when we were meeting live, everybody agreed that Eva and I would kind of coordinate the process. So we have gotten together and put together a draft that I sent to everyone. But before I get into that, I wanted to back up a step because I've been looking at just somewhat the ability to balance around everything and the access that we all have to being a part of things. And I felt like I was to some extent getting to be in the, in the middle of it almost too much and wondered if this should be spread out. So I reached out to Cynthia and asked if she would be interested in somewhat taking over my place in this and letting Cynthia and Eva be the coordinators of this process. And Cynthia thankfully is willing to do that and interested, but we wanted to run that by everybody first and make sure that that is okay with everybody.
This is where we have a wrestling match over who gets to do this.
Yeah, I know. Exactly.
I agree with me if Cynthia wants to sign up for more work.
Okay. Some people are.
I'll support it and I'll support it in the form of saying thank you Cynthia, on my behalf and Heather's.
I'm very appreciative. So anyway, that, so I'm very happy about that, very appreciative. So Cynthia and Eva will kind of run with the coordination. First, however, since I was a part of putting this together, what I will do is do a quick high level of a proposed process. I did send a document to each of you and I guess we don't have it posted, so we will get it posted. But let me run through just kind of what Eva and I talked about as a potential process. First laying out that the situation, I think we all know it, but I just want to say it here because it's important that we have to keep in mind that our priority for the next few months has to be allowing the superintendent to maintain focus on the planning and kind of the redefinition of education even around this pandemic and remote learning and everything. So we want that to. So we want that to remain her focus. We don't want to take her away from it to, to do other things. That said, we do want to provide her with a performance record. So the objectives in this process are one, to provide a performance record for the 2019, 2020 year, and also to minimize the extra burden on her while she manages this. So Eva and I talked about a proposed process as using a simplified evaluation process for this year, which basically would mean instead of using the full Desi rubric, that we would focus on the superintendent's goals that we all agreed to at the beginning of the year. What, sorry?
Sorry, that was me.
Oh, okay. If you have a question, let me know. I'm now splitting my screen and looking more at my document than all of you. So if you have a question and I don't notice, just jump in and ask.
Okay, great. That was another meeting cropping into my screen.
Got it, got it. Okay.
Muting didn't work.
So typically this process, as most of you know, includes two parts of the evaluations. It's the superintendent's goals that the school committee has agreed to as well as standards that are a part of the Desi rubric. So we're recommending that we don't spend time on all of the standards, but focus purely on this year's goals. To do that, Lori would provide each of us with a high level summary of what she's accomplished. Obviously, this has to be within the lens of what's gone on since March. So I think we can look at it from, well, July of last year through March. And obviously acknowledge that everything had to stop there. So that lens is important to this whole process. She, in this recommendation, would not have to provide physical evidence of every accomplishment, just tell us that she's done it. And then could also include an extra section for COVID-19 pandemic related activity, because there's been a lot that has gone on since March. Each of us would have the opportunity to meet with her remotely, of course. And then we would use the standard Desi scale to provide a rating on each goal. So those, those levels are exceeded, met significant progress, some progress or did not meet. There's a link to the MAS C has guidance on evaluations this year. So we could certainly use that to, to guide that. And then the evaluation coordinators now Cynthia and Eva will synthesize those readings and comments into a summative evaluation to prove to be presented in a school committee meeting. So the timeline that we laid out again as a recommendation is that by May 8th, Lori will provide us with a summary of her accomplishments. By May 22nd, everybody will have a virtual meeting with her to discuss those if wanted, of course. By May 29th, we will each provide our evaluation to the coordinators. And by June 5th, Eva and Cynthia would summarize those into a summative evaluation for us to present at our school committee meeting, June 9th. So again, this is for discussion, but wanted to have something to begin with for us to all discuss and hopefully agree on a process today that we can execute efficiently. So thoughts, questions?
I wonder Cynthia, if you're taking some ownership with Eva on the coordination. Before we weigh in, can we get your sense about this now that you're grabbing it?
Well, I have, I had a little opportunity to look at the current rubric. I think it was a trial rubric for this year. I've lost.
It was.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'd like to do something a little more formal and I completely understand that we have to be respectful of where we're spending our time. And I was wondering if I could just work with Eva and the superintendent to perhaps either we could have a quick meeting next week, bring back a slightly altered, maybe more structured approach, using the rubric to some extent, putting in the current set of goals and then actually having a school committee meeting, maybe the meeting two weeks from now where Dr. Hunter could report on the progress on the goals as of the start of the closure. Does that seem reasonable to people?
I think that. So I looked at the rubric that Cynthia has sent in and I am looking forward to working with Cynthia and superintendent during the meeting to see how we can formalize, give a form that will be easy to follow for, for rating those, those goals that have been met or that have been met for prior to the March, the March pandemic outbreak. I, I do want to stress that, you know, the process really, because of what the school is going through, the process should really not be taxing on the time that the superintendent, superintendent has available to her to, you know, to respond to us and to all of the, all of the things that are going on right now in the district. So I definitely look forward to, you know, formulating some, some easy way that we can have a form that is easy to, to be implemented where members can write in their notes and so open to that.
Right. And I realize we could spend a great deal of time on this and I don't, you know, we don't have that luxury. So I just wanted to focus in on the current set of the goals for this year, but in a format that is clear. So we're all aware of what we're rating the superintendent on and not, you know, sort of a fuzzy thing. So does that seem reasonable? If I, my goal is maybe Monday of next week or something, or maybe Friday, like what day is it today? I don't know. So just putting something and it would be, you know, I hope it's just going to be like a two, the two pages from the rubric. And if we all agree not to do the rest of the ratings this year, I'm fine with that on the performance ratings. If we focus on the goals, so.
To me, Cynthia, it sounds like you're talking about taking this and conflishing it into more detail, which is exactly what we need.
It's just a little more structure.
What's that?
At the end of the, I just like a little more structure. At the end of the day, it could be less detail and less evidence, even though we all know it's there. So and I could have a couple of proposals and we could just sort of decide which one we are going to choose.
I think that would be terrific. I think we do want to make sure first.
Superintendent, I should say.
Right, right. Make sure first we're in agreement on kind of basic concepts. I think the biggest of that being you're saying you're agreeing with the basic concept that will focus on goals, not the other standards.
Correct.
And that's the biggest question here. So I'd love to make sure that we get feedback from the others also.
Good.
Agreed upon. I wanted to get to the basic concepts today.
One of the things I heard in that description was if you, if Dr. Hunter is going to present some of this to us in a meeting, we, you know, we individually might be ready to yield our time one-on-one with her.
Right.
Words are severely limited, so that in the end, it's a, hopefully a shorter amount of time taken up. Taken up than if she had to talk to all six of us.
That makes sense. That's great.
So I certainly support it in concept at the risk of repeating myself from two weeks ago. I think a lot of Dr. Hunter's evidence is already in front of us because of the nature of her reporting to us over the last, what is it, eight or 10 months? So I'm hoping that evidence piece wouldn't be a heavy lift in, in, in any event.
So wrap that up?
I think so. I'll just reach out to Eva and to Dr. Hunter probably a little bit later this week.
Great. And we can touch base on it again in our next meeting, two weeks from now. Perfect. Thank you. And I apologize that this didn't get posted. I'll make sure I get it to her.
I, yeah, Erin's got it now.
Okay.
I sent it to her while you were pulling it up.
That was my miss. We'll get it up there.
And just a quick question, just to ask superintendent, is May 8th, because we, we came up with a proposed timeline. And I know how much is going on at the district currently and how rapidly the situation is changing. Is May 8th still, still like a day that you, you have opportunity to come up with summary of accomplishments? And I also wanted to add that, you know, we do have the data, right? We do have, we, we do have evidence in our email boxes from superintendent. So I would urge that, you know, everyone takes a bit of a part in when we are thinking of evaluation to go back and also look at that information as, as we take notes at, you know, at, at the school committee meetings and there's so much information already sitting in our mailboxes. So this, this becomes a faster process.
I think I got a good start on what I brought you in January. So I've got a pretty strong list up until then. So updating it from January to March feels, doesn't overwhelm me for the eighth. So let me, if that holds when I go to actually approach it, I think, I think the eighth is fine. Thank you for asking.
That's important.
Good. Okay. So I want to note that we're two hours and 45 minutes into this and we have an executive session. The, the next item on here is school committee planning relative to COVID-19 adjusted needs. And it was really meant to allow us to have a conversation about, you know, what we're doing, what are, you know, what are primary purposes relative to assisting in this adjustment? And that, you know, we are comfortable as a committee with both what we are, what we know and what we're hearing, the regularity of what we're hearing. And now that we're back on every two weeks, I think that'll be helpful. And, you know, that we, that we identify collectively how, you know, we hope to operate here in the next, in the foreseeable future. I don't know what normal ever looks like again, but so we'll always be adjusting, I think, for the time being. But, you know, how we can be helpful without being, without slowing down the process of, you know, what we learned today is pretty, pretty detailed and pretty engaging across the district. So. Heather, would you add anything to that?
I think that's good. I, I think really it's about just establishing, like you said, what we're doing. Our high level school committee roles don't change, but in this period, it's about really what does that mean? And how involved are we in discussions? And like you said, the goal is to be helpful, not to be a hindrance.
So I think with that said, if, you know, people have some input on that, take a time here.
I, I certainly do because I've spent the last week trying to get this on the agenda. While you and I haven't spoken, but you got some of the gist of it. What I believe we should be doing is more of what we experienced today. I think that if we are in uncharted waters and things are moving very, very quickly, that might be an argument for the school committee to in fact, slow down. Because when everybody else is moving quickly, it's more imperative that we get insights on the data and the perspectives that are driving some of these quick big decisions. I will spare you the, the three-page presentation I had because I don't think it's necessary. I think when we saw the way that the overview went today and the time we invested and the people who joined us, I think what I said to the CPS chair last week, what I discussed with the superintendent, that even went to Maxie, believe it or not, or MAS C, I should say, really suggests that there might be something to this, that our role and our responsibility doesn't change, but the, the how of information exchange and dialogue can and should change. Might take more time on our part. It might mean that we involve some other people in our meetings the way we did today. But I think that the districts can be well-served if we do it. In normal times, we can have much of our information passed to us through Lori and Jared. I don't think we're in normal times and I think they're going to be the beneficiaries if we, if we flatten communication. And this is right out of Crisis Management Handbook, what you do to navigate crisis effectively. So I would call today a good example of what we could do more of. We saw larger cadre of professional educators join us. I think that was to their benefit as well as ours. And I think there are going to be other professionals and areas of expertise that are going to want to be in the room with us as we do some, some things, the like of which we've, we've never done before in Concord and Concord Carlisle School. So I'd like to see more of the same. I don't want to see today as a, as a one-off presentation, but rather a temporary and very important way of doing business. That'll allow us to drive policy and budget into, into again, some, some uncharted waters.
I wanted, yes, yes, today, I wanted to really thank for today's presentation. And, you know, the question goes out to the administration. What is the best way to communicate as a school committee members to best support the administration and the schools going through so many changes so rapidly that we don't hinder, but we actually bring a positive contribution to planning and to planning for what's ahead of us in the summer and then in the fall.
Eva, if I might, I, I'd want to, I'd want to add my point of view, which is they need to support us too in our role, just as we need to support them in their role. That's the case I'm trying to make, is that maybe information and dialogue look different so that they can support us as we move into a different space. I don't want to see this as, as one way. I think there's a lot of support that we necessarily have to provide and we should. But I think a school committee also needs a certain kind of support that might look a little different right now. That's what I'm trying to say. And today was an example, a successful example of that, I thought.
I agree. I agree. We definitely need the information of what is happening on the ground in the schools. What, you know, what changes are occurring? How the evaluations coming back from parents, the feedback coming back from parents. And so far we've, you know, we've had feedback coming back from the special education's parents and, and this regional one, well, I can speak to the regional one. The last one that was conducted by the, by the superintendent. I would really like to see, you know, continuing that more of it as, you know, as we need to really understand what are the needs of the school committee? How we, you know, what parents are experiencing on the end of the delivery of education and what, what school is doing to, you know, to support, to evolve, to change, to innovate. It's definitely unprecedented time because. It's definitely unprecedented time, because usually those changes take years, and we're doing this as we go, so I do agree with you, Court, in that sense.
Can I just clarify something? Because I completely agree that today was very helpful to get all of that information out. I think, to me, what I'm trying to figure out is, are we asking to do more of that where we are receiving information and getting to ask questions, but of a plan that is being created by the administrators? Or are we asking to be more involved in the creation plan? Because I think that's critical to kind of defining what we do here. If we're talking about operational things and school calendars and how reentry is going to look, then, and now I'm getting into opinion versus question, but then I would think, yes, we should be a part of the discussion. As it relates to something like remote learning that we just heard about, I feel like our role there is hear about it, but not be involved in the sausage-making that is already going on amongst all of the principals and administration, because in terms of remote learning and the specifics of how it happens, I feel like that really is their goal, and I wouldn't want to try, I wouldn't want to slow it down by trying to insert ourselves.
Well, I certainly, I'd love to answer that, because you and I spoke about this last week. Last week, it was, is the school committee's domain going to now creep into the math curriculum? Today, sausage-making, and I think the answer has to be an emphatic no. That's not what we do. But I think there is a line, and I think together, we need to find the line.
Right.
Would a different kind of dialogue assisted the April vacation decision, for example? Would a different kind of dialogue have represented the school committee in the survey? Had we anything to wish to inquire about? We'd discuss it and decide, was there a line that we could meet with the paid professionals? But it's certainly not going to be around sausage-making or curriculum.
Okay.
I think one of the things that's unusual about what we're dealing with right now is the speed with which these things are coming at us, and the amount of time, you know, the very limited amount of time that we have to roll some of this stuff out. And, you know, we do have the ability, that we often don't have, of, you know, most of us are homebound, or, you know, we're in one of two places, home or office, and, you know, we have the ability to be more flexible in when we are engaging directly with one another. And, you know, I think there's, you know, there's no change in the delineation of delivery of curriculum and the approach to pedagogy, but that's the thing that's changing so dramatically in here. And we'll continue to do so as we are today. It's going to be tweaking this thing all the way through the end of the year, and in the process, learning about things that we're going to do for next year if we're in the same boat. And, you know, I know that my capacity to offer much of anything in the way of constructive input to that process is extremely limited. And I would rather, you know, I know I'd rather be hearing what we're doing, what we've done in between our meetings. And, you know, if there's something then that it appears we could offer, have ideas, we offer them. You know, I think the, you know, we all asked some questions today about, what's the level of normal curriculum delivery that we're going to see? Or we're hoping to be able to do? And I think that's a domain where, you know, we definitely have a responsibility of oversight and an understanding of, you know, what's possible, and what can we do to improve if there's a potential to do that through budgetary means, through policy? Again, recognizing that, you know, this is moving so quickly that, you know, we're probably talking about things we will be doing for the fall rather than what we're going to do over the next 6 weeks of school. And, you know, I think it's really helpful for us to hear what's going on, and I think that helps us think about budgets. If, you know, if we get into this and we, you know, I mean, there's going to be, there are going to be budget issues along the way here. Probably none while I'm on the committee, but certainly we're going to be focused with probably added scrutiny over the fiscal year '21 budget. And we are unclear on what's coming in the door from the state, and we're unclear what's going to be in the conference of the town. And so I think understanding what the educators are trying to accomplish and are accomplishing is important, because then it gives us some sense of, sorry about the dog. It gives us some ability to frame what we need to do around budgets, and if this comes down to some policy things, I don't know what they'd be, but it came down to some policy things, those are, and then, you know, overall curriculum, that's kind of our domain, rather than delivery, which most of what's going on seems to be about delivery.
So somewhere in there earlier, either Cindy or Eva asked for some perspective from Dr. Hunter on this, Laura, can you give us a feel for what you think feels comfortable and balanced?
Yeah, to me, it's, I think the conversation's really important, because to me, I want this to be the same partnership we've had, and we've just got to get clarity with each other on how that works. So I think this is the conversation we need to have, because I think we've just recalibrating, now that we're, you know, this many weeks in, and we know we're in it for at least the rest of this year, and know we need a lot of variables at play, you know, contingency plans of all kinds going into the fall, and probably all of next year. I think this is the conversation we need to have, just in terms of how you want the flow to go and the structures to go. Getting feedback on how the other conversation just went was really, is really helpful to hear that was going in the right direction. I mean, I think, and I said this as I touched base with each of you over the last few days, I think there's that educational pool, and then there's all the other operational that aren't really operational just anymore. I think David said it really well to me the other day. Every operational decision is completely strategic at this point. And so that flow has to continue to come to you, but the guidance that I think Jared and I and the team that was with you need is, do you want us to craft the plan and then bounce it with you as it's evolving? And I hope the pace slows down enough that that's completely doable every other week, rather than the way it's felt up till now. I think it probably is, once we're planning towards the summer and fall. Or do we need another structure that helps the committee to feel more at the table in the decisions? Or is it the committee itself that wants to be in those decisions? I think those are what the buckets I started to put them in over the last few days of, am I, are we reporting to you for feedback? Hopefully, there's time that we don't have to have decisions made, and we have time for feedback. I think that is key. But, or is there another structure? I don't know, task force, subcommittee, something like that, that's a mix? Or is it the committee wants to really be in building things? And I think you've started to answer that the latter isn't the direction you want to go. But just clarifying that today, I think's absolutely the right direction, and then we'll all be synced up, and it'll flow really nicely from there.
So Lori, thank you. I think you sort of tell us there's so many options on the table.
Yeah.
And I'm of a mind, I remember back to the Hasienn days, that we spent 6 months or more talking about changing the start time. And on top of that, that was an advisory committee, and then school committee time. And, you know, so it's, I think, a bit difficult for me to decide today on a specific way to go. But I do think it should be in the realm of something outside of the regular school committee operations, because I would like to bring the community along as well, not just students, and I'd like to hear more from educators, to be honest, about their different perspectives, because I think people are doing things in a variety of ways, as we heard today. So I'm not really, even though it would be great to just say we're going to do this today, I can honestly make a decision on what we should do without sort of going through the options and the ups and downs of those various options. So with you, of course, and the rest of your leadership team.
Let me chime in. I, again, I don't think it's really that complicated. I think that the things we heard today are definitely, in my mind, operational decisions that reporting out is fine. I mean, that was a good meeting, and a lot of information exchanged, chance to ask questions, you know, I think all that is like normal. To me, that's sort of normal course of business, rolling out a program. I believe that the 2 areas, and as Lori said, you know, I mentioned that they're kind of, it's hard to unwrap the 2, budget and operations, but the big-picture things are, you know, coming up. What does the summer program look like? What is the fall program looking like? And what are the budget implications of those 2 things? And then the third piece, which is budget, is, you know, in the context of what the state is informing us in terms of aid that's available. So as I spoke to Lori this weekend, I think I'll skip summer and go right to fall. I think that there's really only, there's really 3 things. There's either school as usual, no, remote school continues, or some, you know, social distance school, which may be some combination of split days, no extracurriculars, limited extracurriculars. I mean, there's a bunch of little iterations inside that. But basically, those are the 3 buckets. And I think in terms of where I believe Court is going, we should be more than informed about those. I think we should be part of that strategic process. So as those decisions, not even the decisions, as the range of options that, say, the fall looks like, you know, what is, does it mean no fall sports? Does it mean cross-country's okay, but football's not? Does it mean that we need to erect a big tent and have calisthenics? You know, whether, regardless of whether, you know, we're out in the field and running? I mean, you know, those are, that's a kind of a sideshow. But I mean, we need to begin to be considered on the range of things that, hold on one second, sorry. We need to be, we need to be part of the deliberative process that evaluates those things, not just report out. That's my view. And then, of course, the budget is a big piece of that, and what that means. So that's kind of where I draw the line. Fine with information as it's being presented, but I do side with Court on the interest, my interest anyway, of, you know, being deliberative on the big-picture questions. That's it. I'm done.
Court, you look like you're talking, but you're muted.
Okay.
There we go. Were you saying something? We didn't?
I'm trying to get away from another meeting that's trying to join me. I had a noon meeting.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Okay. You look like you're.
Trying to get rid of it.
Okay. So is this starting to give us a little more definition? I think what I'm hearing is, when we're talking about, you know, curriculum and not specific stuff, we would like reports like we had today and be able to ask questions. And when we're talking big-picture, strategy, budget-related, kind of long-term plans-type thing, we would like to be a little bit more part of the deliberative processes, David says. And so then it's a question of, how is that? Are we just bringing those topics to school committee meetings? And probably for the highlight, you know, for long-term strategic questions, that probably makes the most sense, is just to just have those things on our school committee agenda items. And is there some middle ground where, to Lori's Court, some task force with representative representation from us is necessary? Or does it split easily enough into reports on some things and agenda items for discussion on others?
So I would argue for more of what we saw today, because what I thought was, we're responding to how quickly everything is moving in certain times by, as I said before, slowing down the school committee process of information exchange, bringing a few more people into the room, because if everything's moving so quickly, we increase the risks that are already great already around our roles. So if, at least in the meetings that we have, if nowhere else, we can slow things down, bring other people into the room, I think we are going to be the beneficiaries, and I hope then the district's going to be the beneficiary. I don't think we need new structures. I don't think this is a what, I think it's a how. How are we going to do it? Can we slow things down? Can we not channel as much through the Superintendent and the Director of Finance as we did before, so that when we are supporting strategic decisions, we in the community are that much more informed? Because we didn't do the sausage-making, to use that reference, but it was more visible, and these tough choices we're making, and these struggles we're having, and the complex issues that we're dealing with have become more visible because of the very nature of their newness and difficulty. I don't want, I don't think we need a new structure. We've got a school committee. I think we have a school committee that would benefit from being informed with a slightly more patient process, even though everything else is moving faster.
Okay, so then, logistically, I would just want to make sure this makes sense. I don't want to sit here and all of a sudden commit the entire team of administrators and principals to come to all of our school committee meetings, because that would be a lot, I'm assuming. But would it, is this looking like we're asking for maybe some of them at a time more often? Or are you, I just want to get down to the brass tacks of what we're asking Lori to do and what we're asking for.
Well, with all due respect to our faculty and our staff and our leadership, I don't think the school committee needs to apologize to want to get closer to the thinking and the processes that they're using to bring recommendations and asks to the school committee and the community. I don't, I think, to your question, it should be agenda-specific. Do we need those people in the room? If we're talking facility, I think we need facility people in the room. If we're talking health implications, we'd love some expert knowledge from health professionals that we could dialogue with. If it's about transportation, I would hope we would briefly get closer to transportation people. So I simply think that we benefit from flattening and widening distribution, communication channels at this particular point in time. And this may actually benefit Lori and Jared, because they don't have to be the conduit to distill everything for us quite as fully as they normally do. That's where I'm coming from.
I think I hear something here that might help. What Court's describing is, you know, over the length of a school year, we have these sorts of interactions in our meetings over the months with various people from the school community that inform us on detail of what's going on. The rapidity with which this is unfolding is sort of squashes the timeframe. And you're doing, I'm speaking to Lori, you're doing all of these things with your team in different groups. You're pulling together the people that need to be together to talk about specific issues, and things are, like, by, because of where we are in this and what we're faced with, have to happen quickly. And there has to be a level of, has to be a level of speed with which you can make decisions, and that would be drawn out over time during the course of a regular year. I think certainly. I think certainly, you know, we have to recognize that, you know, we need you and your team to make these decisions and adjustments about delivery and, you know, many of the other things that have gone on here. And trust that we have the right, we, you know, we've been able to put the right people in place to do that. And then, you know, coming back to us like you have today and then how you inform us in between meetings about things that have been done or things that we may need to expect to, to speak to in the next meeting is what we might hope for in this process. I don't want to see us do anything that slows down your ability to respond to both the needs of students and faculty and the demands of D E S I and the state, given our limited ability because of open meeting law to, to get in the middle of those sorts of things. Or to, you know, I mean, if you need to make a decision in 24, 48 hours, we can't get together and get informed about that stuff and, and be in any great way involved in those things. And it's just the nature of the times. I think I would, I would hope we can leave it to you, Lori, that if something comes up that, you know, you have to make a decision on, that is pretty clearly something that school committee ought to be involved in, that we then, the school committee, have to be ready in 48 hours to meet, to give a response to that. 48 hours being all the, you know, we have to have that buffer just to post a meeting. But that we're ready to do those sorts of things. Otherwise, you know, we can't, we can't ask for much other than the report back and, you know, the longer perspective, things that are going to go on here over the next couple of months that we get informed of, you know, while the, while the sausage is being made and we can weigh in. That make sense?
It does. And certainly, I'm hoping that now that we know schools close the rest of the year, I'm hoping the pace is a little different, that those, those speedy decisions are fewer and farther between so that there's more opportunity to bring it to you in a different way. So I think I'm getting clarity. And it might be a little trial and error at the next, you know, for the short term and while we really figure this out. But I, I think today's given me a lot of feedback that's very helpful. So why don't I, why don't we all think on it? I'll reach out if there's any other questions between now and the next meeting. And Cynthia, I know, is still thinking too, so maybe revisit it in two weeks.
And that revisit can include what, what did work today? Why, why did some of us claim that was an effective shift in not our responsibilities, but in how we debate, discuss, dialogue, learn? Because I personally think it was effective. I was, I was very pleased.
One of the things I think we can remember is that T A G has given us a little more latitude here to have emergency meetings if we need to. But you still have to have something that has to get decided and determined in a shorter period of time than 48 hours. But so we do have that option if time comes.
My only other two cents is that, you know, we don't have community comment at our meetings anymore. And I know you take questions at your three o'clock call, but the school committee doesn't really have an opportunity outside of email to dialogue with the community. And I think it's something we should all think about, to restore that in some way. Whether, you know, we don't need to have forums about town meeting really that much. So maybe try to think of something where we could engage with the community. So just, I think about.
I'm going to have to sign off. I didn't schedule three and a half hours for these meetings. If we're going to have, if these are going to be these kind of meetings, I, I don't know that I can support the daytime meeting, but.
It's worth a look.
I'll, I have to go do other things. I have a whole bunch of things waiting.
Yeah.
All right. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Okay, so can we move on to action item?
Yes.
And I think we needed a little, I don't have anything. There's a link here, but.
I'd be happy to read it if.
Pardon me?
Happy to read it if you'd like, Wally.
Good, good, thank you.
That the Concord and Concord-Carla School Committees vote to approve the request of Ms. Johnson to enroll her daughter in the Concord Public Schools, Concord, Concord-Carla Regional School District, beginning August 2020, and that tuition be waived. And this is Christina Johnson, school psychologist at C C H S, daughter to enroll in kindergarten.
Is that a motion for both committees?
Yes, it is.
Do we have a second?
Second for both?
Any discussion on this? So by roll, I heard, I heard this done maybe a little more easily. If, if I just call on each one of you, then you can give your, so Cynthia?
Aye.
Can you make it for both committees at once if you're?
For both?
Thank you.
Eva?
Most of you for region.
Heather?
Yes, aye for both.
Court?
Both aye for both.
And Johnston, aye for both. Motion carries. So, I'll read this and then we'll. Executive session, the Concord School Committee and Concord-Carla Regional School Committee will enter into executive session under purpose two of the open meeting law to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations and non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations. The non-union personnel on purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the body and not to return to open session, kind of a motion for both committees to do so.
Move for both, Booth.
Second?
Second for both.
And roll vote, Cynthia?
Aye for both.
Heather?
Aye for both.
Court?
Booth, aye for both.
Eva?
Most of you for region.
And Johnston, aye for both. So we are adjourned and we will see each other in a separate Zoom meeting.
One more item?
Yes.
Happy birthday, Lori.
Oh, thank you. Tomorrow, I know. My family's, my family's trying to figure out how to make sure the chocolate cake still shows up, so.
It does, then.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Can we have two minutes bio break and then meet in exact? Okay. Thanks, everyone.